Good evening, I'm David Assad, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River at 6:00 PM on Thursday, August 17th, 2017. We are meeting at one government center in the City Council Room. This is a meeting of the local public body and as such is subject to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, commonly known as the Open Meeting Law. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretaries this evening are Kerry A. Ash, the lady to my right, and Brittany Farry, the lady to my left. One of them is recording an audio version of the four -- is an audio version, and four of a government TV, Phil Sabatino, is recording both a video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement. Regular members of the zoning board are John Frank III, James Corkin, Carolyn Marasette, Greg Brilliant, and new alternate member David H. Saber. Kerry and Brittany have all petitions to be considered, been properly advertised, and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A as amended?
Yes.
I declare the August 17th, 2017 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the board, including the petitioners, abudders, anyone in support, or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the chairman. The board's rules and regulations direct the board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioners' claim. As such, the petitioners should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this is the board -- that this board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the zoning board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petition and after a decision of the board has been made. For example, there is a new city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. The Director of Planning has recommended to this board that if relief is granted, then it should consider, one, a condition that no building permit shall be issued prior to the approval of the site plan by the Site Plan Review Committee under Section 10-1, and, number two, a condition that no site preparation work be commenced prior to approval by the site plan -- by the Site Plan Review Committee under that same section, 10-1. A copy of the ordinance is available at the City Clerk's office or from the Planning Department. I recommend that anyone asking to develop, improve, or use real estate should first ask a building inspector from our Building Department since they are the zoning enforcement authority. Finally, I disclose that an official copy of the four of the zoning ordinance is available at the City Clerk's office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. Agenda items this evening, 01, number four, have asked to withdraw their petition, and item six has requested that their matter be tabled to our September meeting. I will take those items first. So, agenda item 01, Salvation Army 82 St. Mary Street, Lot S1617. This was a special permit request to convert the existing structure into a group residence in a general District G, lot size 11,728 plus or minus square feet. This was continued from the June 15th meeting. We received the letter on July 25th from Attorney Sammy Baghdadi, who is the representative of the petitioner, and it says, "Dear Mr. Assad, the Salvation Army hereby withdraws its application for a special permit without prejudice. Thank you for the board's attention to this matter." So, that's the request. If anybody is here for that petition, that was what we received. So, is there anyone here in favor of this petition or opposed to this petition? Can I get a motion to grant?
Allow me to withdraw the motion.
Okay, I have Greg's motion to grant second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that one is withdrawn without prejudice. We'll do agenda item number four, which is, where is it? Robert Robalod, 102 County Street, K545, a special permit request to open a private organization for the consumption of marijuana. We received a letter dated August 16th to the Planning Board and to the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River. "I, Robert Robalod, am removing myself from the August 17, 2017 docket in regards to 102 County Street. Please remove me from the evening's agenda without prejudice. Sincerely, Robert Robalod." Is there anyone here that came in favor of this petition or anyone opposed to this petition?
Is that a withdrawal?
Withdraw. Withdraw. Request for withdrawal.
I'm going to allow the draw.
Okay. Motion to second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so number four has been withdrawn. Agenda item number six, S. Beacon Community Development Trust, Break Street, Bay Street, Chase Street, Center Street, and South Beacon Street, H. 71 and H. 613. The request was a variance, or is a variance request, to divide the property into single-family lots waiving dimensional requirements in a commercial mill District CMD and two-family District R4. Lot sizes 106, 153 plus or minus square feet, 260, 525 plus or minus square feet. And we received a letter from Attorney Arthur D. Frank Jr., Esquire, dated August 15th, 2017. "Dear Mr. Chairman, please accept this letter as my client's request to table this matter to September 21st, 2017 zoning board of appeal meeting. Beacon desires to perform additional due diligence prior to presenting its petition to the board. Please advise if there is a cost for republication. Very truly yours, Arthur D. Frank Jr." I think Arthur's somewhere here. Is there anything you want to add to that, Arthur? Or that's?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there any -- if there's anyone here that came in favor of this petition or opposed to this petition? I'm not going to take any evidence, but if you'd like to be heard, I'll allow you to speak. Okay, can I get a motion to table this matter to the September -- we agree September 21st? September 21st meeting date?
Move to a table to a September meeting.
Okay. Motion made by Jim Corkin. Do I get a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Okay, so that one is -- that item, agenda, is taken over to September 21st. Was there any -- there was nothing else, Brittany? Nothing else? Okay. We'll start with agenda item 02, Jacob Lopes, 12 Yellow Hill Road, Lot W. 3813. Variance request to divide the property to two lots, leaving the existing single-family dwelling on one lot, and to construct a single-family dwelling on the other lot waiving dimensional requirements. In a single-family residence are 80, lot sizes 63,037 plus or minus square feet and 46,290 plus or minus square feet.
Chairman.
Good evening, Attorney Levin. You identify yourself for the record, please.
My name's Attorney Michael Levin, Law Office at 1111 138 Rock Street, Forefords, Massachusetts. I'm here this evening with Jacob Lopes, the owner of the property, 12 Yellow Hill Road, Forefords, Massachusetts. This property is on the border of Donovan, Massachusetts, and Fall River, and it's all in Fall River now. The property itself has an unusual history. In the front of the property, and some of them, remember when I came here a few years ago for my client, the front of the property used to be the old Coke Cut Lounge. This was an area that had a licensed liquor permit. It used to be a place where people went for a long time until the thing burned down. Subsequent to that time, the prior owner had acquired the property and built a house in the back of the property. This property is an extremely unusual-shaped piece of land, and it was not created by my client or predecessor. In fact, we did the title examination in 10 Yellow Hill Road, which is parcel W. 3811, which basically separates almost completely the back of the lot where my client lives from the front of the lot where the old lounge is. And that property, going back to 1948, still consists of that dimensional requirement of about one acre of land back then. And we didn't go much further than that. We don't know when it was created, but, you know, obviously at some point in time, this was all one piece of land until it got all chopped up for different owners. But since 1948, the Wilkins property has consistently had the same dimensional requirements. Now, basically, this property has a house in the back of it, which would, if permitted, would have a parcel of land. We'd maintain about 64,000 square feet of land, just shy of the current zoning requirements of 80,000 square feet. And the front parcel of land will have more than 46,000. Other than the abutting property right next to it, the other lots surrounding it all are less than the 80,000-square-foot area requirements that this more current zoning had. They're all around one acre of land. We're asking that this parcel, which has an odd configuration, be subdivided to allow, instead of a business activity that my client once wanted on the same lot, to allow a single-family home to be constructed. That would be consistent with the neighborhood, it would be consistent with the lots in the neighborhood, but obviously we have these deficiencies because the property does not sit on the road. It goes into the property lengthwise, separated by the other house. My client has spoken to the Wilkins. They were, obviously, wanted to know what we're doing, and where the property and what use of it. We did provide a sketch to them, which I have to offer to you, showing where the house would be positioned, and where the driveway access to the new house would be, and where the easement that they share right now with the back house would be afterwards. So, I really got this today, so I'd like to submit that in because that's what the Wilkins requested that we do for them. And that is basically what we're looking at. Now, again, yeah, it's just an unusual parcel of land that's existed so long. It's almost like two parcels of land. The front of it, if you go by there, you see the old asphalt where the old parking lot is, and it looks like a parking lot there. It really isn't the nicest piece of land that you would have in that area that would be useful to a home or have any benefit to this neighborhood, leaving it in its current condition. It would be profitable to the neighborhood, it would be profitable to the city to have the extra tax dollars, and it would clean up and be much more aesthetically pleasing to all the neighbors. And there we are, without really doing any harm, since there once was a large business on that property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levin. Members of the board, any questions?
Right now, it's a conforming lot, correct?
Technically, it is.
But you're seeking to make it a non-conforming lot?
That is correct. There's no question, it's just such an odd configuration here that we have. There's really no best interest to using that piece of land, leaving it empty. It does nothing for the neighborhood. And again, it's a big piece of asphalt from the old -- and probably a foundation from the old Coke Cut Lounge, which still remains there because my client doesn't have the resources to remove it or the need to even maintain that part of the area of the property.
Except the zoning is R. 80.
Well, I'm correct.
I know I am Attorney Levin.
No, I mean, I understand.
But, so it's an R. 80, it's an R. 80 district. And what was there before that zoning came into effect, the Planning Board, along with the City Council, made the determination that we wanted 300 feet of frontage, we wanted 80,000 square feet. And I think the thought behind that, and I'm trying to think whether you and I had a similar case over there, that the legislative history behind it was they wanted to curb the development of single-family or any development out there. So, that's where they came up with the 80,000 square feet and the 300 feet of frontage. I don't remember, somehow I'm thinking this lot was created by either act of a previous zoning board, but I don't remember.
No.
No, I listened to what you just said about 1946, you took it back to?
Type of change, if you will.
Yeah, no, I don't. That's my recollection. So, that's really my big concern about what the development is in this R. 80 district, and if a variance is granted, really what that does for us. But let's see, if there's anybody else, or if there's anybody in favor or opposed to it. Any members of the board, any other questions? No. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition? We received two letters of correspondence. I don't know whether you saw it or not. One was from Green Futures, dated July 18, 2017. And they, I guess I should read it rather than just making it part of the record. So, Green Futures, July 18, 2017. "Members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, we have noticed that the notice for public hearing for the four of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the August 17 meeting includes six petitions for dividing lots into two or more lots. We wish to remind you that the petitions are illegal, both by state law and by oath of office that you took to accept the position as members of the zoning board. Section 10 of the Zoning Act clearly states clearly that variance ought to be granted only if circumstances related to the soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures are little enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship to the petitioner. What this means is, owing to circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, for odd-shaped lots, or the topography of such land where steep slopes would prevent development, would justify the development of the lot as one lot. The Zoning Board of Appeals does not have a thought to grant a variance to divide any conforming lot to include an additional lot. There is no hardship in any of these six lots. This issue has come before the courts in many instances, and every time the courts have decided against the reduction of the lot to include more than allowed by the zoning ordinance. Given that the Act says, given what the Act says about the issue of dividing lots that do not meet the zoning ordinance, and given your oath of office to uphold the requirements of the Zoning Board of Appeals, it's clear that the six petitions to be decided by you need to be denied. In particular, we wish to comment on petition Jacob Lopes of 12 Yellow Hill Road, Lot W. 3813. This petition requests a variance to divide property into two lots, leaving the existing single-family dwelling on one lot, and to construct a single-family dwelling on the other lot. For all those reasons, we request that this and all of the other petitions be denied." That Timothy Bennett, President of Green Futures. So, if you need a copy, we'll give you a copy of that. The other one is coming from the City of Fall River, the Watupaw Water Board, signed by John Frye II clerk, regarding agenda item Jacob Lopes, 12 Yellow Hill Road. The four of a water department opposes the variance request of Jacob Lopes for subdividing assesses parcel W. 3813 because, number one, there is no physical hardship to justify a variance, and, two, there are affirmative reasons -- there are affirmative reasons to deny the variance. And he goes on to tell us what he believes the law and the ordinance is required. So, the City of Fall River has stated their opposition to it, along with Green Futures. Would you like a minute to respond to any of that?
Well, I do have to say this is an unusual parcel of land. And I come before you, and it was like the abutting land, and I would have a difficult situation here to ask you to do much for me. It's not like I could create a regular subdivision with this property because it lacks the different dimensional requirements. But just looking at this lot, if you look at what these are, you actually have two lots that are connected by a small, it's like 20-foot-wide lip that was left to keep these what at some point in time before 48, when this was created. It's just such an unusually topographical piece of land that it has no purpose in use for anything for the house that's in the path. It's really almost as if it's another house lot, and people think it is out there, and that's why they kind of get upset in the neighborhood and say, "Why is all that tar out there and all the weeds growing out of the thing?" Because it's unsightly. But again, like I mentioned before, it just, it has no value to my client. It serves nothing more than to be nice towards the neighbors. The best thing we thought today is because of such an odd topographical thing, it already looks like it's a separate lot, is to permit that lot to be built upon, let someone enhance the neighborhood and fix up the property a little bit more.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I too understand your concerns and would have them. The thing about this that I do think is unusual, you have that house right in the middle of it that also uses a -- no, I'm saying that I think that that's the reason why I may be, I may be inclined to go along with this. Because it's already being used in such a fashion as that 20-foot strip to get back to not only Mr. Jacob's house, but 10 Yellow Hill Road. And if that can be developed and cleaned up and get that foundation out, I think it's going to enhance the neighborhood. And looking at these other lots, and obviously, I'm not an engineer, and I don't know if they're drawn to scale or what have you, but it looks like they're still going to be bigger than most of the lots. And I think it would clean up the neighborhood. And if it wasn't for the fact that they were already using that 20-foot strip, even if he wasn't, the middle house has to use it because they can't get there. It's landlocked, otherwise. So, while I do appreciate those concerns, and would have them under normal circumstances to not allow this with a 20-foot strip, I think it may be the best use for the lot.
Okay. Any other comments?
I can't note, though, if the other houses that are, yes, south of that, are all about one-acre lots.
And they're all in Donovan, though, anyhow, right?
They are in Donovan. They're all about one acre. It says only permitted one acre compared to the change we had.
Motion to grant, motion to deny?
I'll make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant by Greg Brilliant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John Frank. Any discussion on the motion?
Any conditions on that?
Mr. Corkin, I don't think so. I don't see any because he's got plenty of room, but they're going to use the 20 feet. They're going to have to maintain it because they can't get to, that's what they're using as the frontage.
No further subdivision.
Oh, I'll put that in, absolutely.
No question.
No further subdivision is, you know, they'd have to come before us anyhow, but you can put that into stipulation. Mr. Frank, I'm fully amenable to amending my motion to that effect.
No further subdivision. Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Greg, John, Jim, yes. Carolyn, no. Assad, no. Petition is not granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number three, Second Street Rooming House LLC, care of Michael Buckley, 621 Second Street, Lot G. 75. Special permit request to increase capacity from 15 occupants to 32 occupants. An existing lodging house waiving zoning requirements and an apartment District A2, lot size 10,330 plus or minus square feet. This is what? Jim, Frank, how are you?
Good, Mr. Assad, how are you?
Fine. Identify yourself, please, for the record, and tell us what you'd like to do.
Yes, good evening. My name's John Frank, I'm an attorney. I have a law office at 209 Bedford Street. I'm here representing Second Street LLC, Rooming House LLC. With me is Christopher Buckley and Michael Buckley, the principals of the LLC. They're requesting, as we just read, that the special, they're requesting a special permit to increase occupancy from 15 occupants to 32 occupants. My clients have been before licensing and have been licensed for the 32, and we're here seeking special permit for zoning. My clients have gone through the trouble of, as we know, getting architectural plans to show what they intend to do within the structure. Since they're increasing, I wish to increase the number of occupants in the commercial building. They are willing to install an elevator that's going to be done, if allowed, within the footprint of the building itself, so there won't be any exterior changes. And they have plans to do renovations within the building to bring everything up to full. My clients bought the property about a year ago. Numerous problems, there was people in there that were sort of unsavory, they've got rid of those people. They've done exterminations, they've cleaned up the property. Michael Buckley is actually living on the property as sort of a security until renovations can begin and until the place can be occupied.
Nothing is happening outside. Everything is happening within the confines of the existing building.
That is correct. The architect went to great lengths to ensure that nothing on the exterior of the building would change. My clients, I would just point out, have other rooming houses that are successful. They have one on South Main Street. Those property, that property is managed, they have a full-time manager on premises. They have another property, and it's also a rooming house on Osborne Street, and that, they tell me, is primarily occupied by Catholic Social Services, and the tenants are provided through that agency. And it's also managed by Catholic Social Services. My clients have a success, a history of success, running the rooming houses. They'd like to do the same on Second Street. It was a nunnery, I assume, at one point in time, it was a, wanted to be a, planned to be a bed and breakfast, I'm not sure if that ever came to fruition. But now, my clients would like to make it into lodging for low-income people. They feel there's a need for this type of lodging. Likewise, like the other properties that they have, will also be managed full-time as a husband-wife team.
Yeah, three managers, actually.
Three managers.
One for each floor. Management is critical and key to these properties.
I'm just a little lost. Is it already zoned to have 15 occupants?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a copy of the.
There's a prior zoning decision.
When?
1998. I'll tell you, Greg. 1998.
But if it hasn't been used?
No, it has been used. They're telling me that this 15?
There were occupants.
There are, wait a minute. Is my understanding this, it's operating right now with 15 occupants?
No.
No.
I own a property over there, this hasn't been used.
We evicted them when we bought it.
Okay. So, let me just, let me get back to the 1998 decision. It wasn't, let's see what this is. "In the matter of general goal, permission to convert the existing bed and breakfast --" Talk about a guarantee, so I grant a petition. So, was this a variance or was this a special permit? I guess is the question.
It was a variance.
And it was recorded?
No, no, I know it was recorded, but I'm trying to see whether it was a special permit or a variance, because if it was a variance, whether they used it or didn't use it after the grant, if they did it after the grant of the variance for a while.
This says it was to convert to a bed and breakfast.
I got this. That's what I'm.
So, that allows this?
To convert an existing dwelling into a bed and breakfast waiving use requirements. If that's the one you're showing me, the 1998.
That's the one you're showing me.
Yeah, okay. So, it's not an ongoing, I was under the impression that you were operating, and it was a 15-unit, 15-unit rooming house. It is not. It's a vacant piece of property, is what you're tightening up.
At the time of purchase, there were occupants in there. My clients.
It's legal.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm getting at, Greg. I think you're correct.
Because I also don't think you go, you can't get a license before you get a variance.
Yeah, well, you can't.
You can get a license if the zoning's not?
Depending on what, yeah, because the license will be dependent on getting the.
They usually make you sign off before. That's a requirement of licensing, to make sure zoning's.
They do have a license.
No, she's saying, that's what I'm hearing.
Have a license for 15?
I don't remember the amount of occupants.
Oh, wait a minute. Attorney Frank here said they just booked it.
Just before licensing.
Just before licensing. That's why I knew, I thought it was operating. My understanding was, it was operating, they went before the licensing board and increased the number from 15 to 32.
32.
32. And, because sometimes, what do you do? Do you get the variance first, do you get the license?
I always thought that when you own for a license, you have to.
If it doesn't meet the zoning, you have to get a variance.
Yeah.
Before?
I guess the question is, when did it change from a bed and breakfast to a rooming house?
I guess it doesn't matter if it was the bed and breakfast, right?
It was a bed and breakfast.
It was, and it operated. But then if they shut down, and whether this was a variance or a special permit, and that's what I'm trying to determine right now, because the facts, a factual change in that I thought it was operating and it's not operating. It says, they're looking, this was, this was it from 19. It says, they're looking, this was it from 19... This is 2017, where they were looking for a special permit. Yeah, that's the only thing. Okay, so whatever. If it was a variance, I don't know whether it was or wasn't, but whatever this was, was for a bed and breakfast, not for a rooming house. So I think that use, my thought would be, my argument would be, the use that was granted in 1998 was limited to whether it was a bed and breakfast, whether it was a special permit or variance, that was the use, not a rooming house. Bed and breakfast being something different than a rooming house. So I think Greg is correct in that statement about if it was not being used currently as a rooming house, then...
But I don't even know where they ever got permission to use it as a rooming house.
Can I ask that question? Can I ask a question? He marketed, you know, through a well-known realtor, local realtor, as a rooming house, advertised it that way, and sold it to us that way. Now, Greg, is it possible that he did that legally?
We were under the understanding when it was sold, that it was the same license, there's only one license, and it's... That rooming house is in the same inclusion as bed and breakfast, as it's rented for a short period of time.
Let me get back to definitions, let me... We'll do some independent research here. Yeah, moment, I'm going to ask you. So, under our definitions, page nine, boarding or lodging house. A dwelling or that part of a dwelling where sleeping accommodations are let, with or without kitchen facilities, to four or more persons not within the second degree of kindred. Second degree of kindred, independent research, parent, child, grandchild, sibling or grandparent, to the persons conducting it, and shall include rooming houses, boarding houses, tourist homes, that shall not include hotels, motels, inns, sororities, fraternities, and cooperative residents, convalescent homes, nursing homes, rest homes, dormitories of charitable or philanthropic institutions, or convalescent or nursing homes licensed under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 111, Section 72, or rest homes so licensed, or group residences licensed, or regulated by agencies of the Commonwealth. So that's our definition of what a boarding or lodging house is. Let me see if we have a bed and breakfast defined. And I don't see a definition for a bed and breakfast.
Could it be the tourist house that's included? That definition, is the chairman just right?
That would be one of your arguments, I would say, of what that bed and breakfast as a tourist house or a rest home or a vacation. To four or more persons not within the second degree conducting it shall rooming houses, boarding houses. But it's interesting that they use the language in this decision from 1998. Into a bed and breakfast, I don't... And I don't remember. Unfortunately, I don't have that part of the old statute memorized. So, all right, Greg, you raised the issue with still before, and I think if we go forward with a special permit, you still have to have the bifurcated hearing, yes or no, and then from there, do we grant it or do we deny it? But I don't know, based on what you're saying, how it existed to begin with. And maybe the special permit should have been a variance, but...
Bifurcated to the extent of more than a total?
I'd like to know if you misrepresented it, if it sold it.
Listen, this is the zoning board of appeals. We're not going to... This is where you are. If the issue before the board is this particular property exists, you're asking for special relief from this board, the issue that's getting raised is how are you existing in the first place? This, whatever this is, whether it was a special permit or a variance, if it was a variance, then you were limited to a bed and breakfast. If it was a special permit and bed and breakfast, I don't know whether that's included, because I don't see a definition for a bed and breakfast. Your attorney makes the representation or wants to make the argument that the bed and breakfast may be a tourist home, but again, we don't... Our definitions don't go beyond and say what a tourist home is. It's not a hotel. Let's see where we're going with it, Greg, because I don't know, just to knock it out and say, no, you don't have it, but whether or not they can meet the standards for a special permit is something I don't know whether they can and can't meet right now. Okay, anything else? Any board members, any other questions?
I just have a question, because I can't look at the plan. Is there parking there? Because parking on Second Street is non-existent.
There's room for 10 to 12 cars. That was indicated in the prior zoning decision as well, that if they took down the garage that was on the property, the prior owner.
On the next... With the plans that were attached to it, it says that it's open for 10 to 12 cars when garage removed.
Well, more importantly, the rooming house we have... Michael, why don't you show us? The rooming house we have on South Main Street has 17 occupants. There's one space. The type of clientele that we have typically don't have cars. It's very simplified living. They can pay $500 or $600 a month, that's all they can afford, and we provide them, you know, a bed and a safe place and cameras and management. They typically... We've only had one car at South Main Street out of 17, and the two years we've owned it, nobody can afford cars. I mean, the people that we serve are one step over a shelter. That's why I think economically it works, you know, in terms of...
I'm just saying, because Second Street has no parking.
You're right about that. We'll maybe... They'll maybe use the 12 that are here, trust me, because they can't afford a car. They want to be able to walk, which they can, to stop and shop. I met with the Handicap Association of Fall River, they're like, Chris, there's not enough of this, especially with an elevator. We talked to the elderly services people, there is a huge need, and we really do things right, onsite management. I'm just kind of flabbergasted about this issue that you brought up, where originally you really hit me.
Well, I just checked, and I know that I didn't see anything that allowed a... And again, if a bed and breakfast is the equivalent of a lodging house, I didn't know that, but maybe I'm wrong, because I knew, I saw that variance decision.
I mean, I think...
Because it doesn't even say how many are in there. I'm not even sure how you ever got 15. That zoning variance doesn't say 15 occupants.
It doesn't say anything. What it says is a bed and breakfast, and what our definition, if we go along with what Attorney Frank is saying, four or more persons not within the second degree of kindred. So, and then Ms. Aash is whispering in my ear, because she's also the clerk of the licensing board, and says that they've been granting licenses for many years to opt to have this place operating. Yeah, if you've got something to add, let's hear it.
This is an A2 district now, correct?
This, right now...
A boarding house is allowed in an A2 district, under the 2013 revisions to zoning. This may have been... There used to be an A2 and an A3. The decision that you have, what zoning district does it say that it's...
It doesn't, that's... A3. It's an A3 district is what it was.
There is no longer an A3.
I know this.
So if you look at the table of uses under an A2, a boarding house is now allowed, as is a bed and breakfast. So you probably don't even need to appear before the zoning board appears. Which is maybe why licensing went forward with the license.
Okay, let's take a look.
That's what the architect was explaining to us, that's why he wasn't sure why we... Because he said it was a decision in the prior...
Right now, it's in an A2 district.
What says under the types of residential uses, boarding house, dormitory, a lodging house is allowed in A2 and a bed and breakfast.
That's correct, it's allowed there.
Which I don't think it wasn't an A3, under the previous zone.
We're going to take a look at the old A3. Residents is for not more than six, boarding home or lodging home for not more than 10 boarders or lodges.
Under A3.
Under the old A3, 86148. So, maybe, maybe it was because this one, under the old statute, under the old ordinance, boarding house or lodging home for not more than 10 boarders, and they had 15. And there's no number that appears in this.
Under the new ordinance?
No, this is the old ordinance.
But the new one gives no number and allows...
The order says it, it says it's a matter of right. Right?
That's what you just read, so...
So if you go to the grid, and you go to the A2 district, and you go to, under residential uses, bed and breakfast, bed and breakfast inns, boarding houses, dormitory or lodgings, it was Y, which is yes, it's a permitted use. And then, so I think what we're stuck with this one is, you've got less than the 10... I think it's less than 10,000 square feet.
Says he has 10,330.
Which, that should be for the first unit. So...
Within A2, it's 10,000.
10,000 for each addition.
How many units are we dealing with?
Yeah, so that's where I think we're going.
It's a dimensional...
The dimensional is deficient, and that, I think, would re...
That would require a variance.
I think that would require a variance, not a... So the special permit would be, other than what we're talking about by the special permit part, would be, we have this existing and we're going to expand the existing usage of what's there. Pre-existing non-conforming, or it's a conforming use, but the structure itself is non-conforming. So, under 86424, non-conform... Other than single or two-family, under 86425, page 55, the zoning board of appeals may grant a special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter or change a non-conforming structure in accordance with the section. And then we get to the bifurcated part. Number one, only if it determines that such reconstruction, extension, alteration or change shall not be substantially more detrimental to the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood, and the following types of changes to non-conforming structures may be considered by the zoning board, reconstruction, extension or structural changes, B, alterations to provide for a substantially different purpose or for the same purpose in a substantially different manner or to a substantially greater extent. So, I guess the argument is, under the special permit, with this particular... It's a substantially greater extent than what was there, if we get there, but first we have to determine whether or not it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists, if we're going to go that route. I mean, that seems to be the legal analysis that we need to go for, in that, under the A2 district, the boarding house isn't allowed usage. Is that what you wanted to say, Attorney Frank?
Exactly, Attorney.
I just don't know how else to get to where you're going, and I... Let me see, let me see what... Do we have the denial? Or is it just a generic denial? Permission to increase capacity, waiving use requirements, Exhibit A, pursuant to Chapter 808, this is to certify what's attached now, you mean? So we don't have anything of any detail from the building department why it was denied? No, it's okay, permission to increase capacity, zoning requirements, zoning district decision, 1998, contrary to the ordinance in your petition's denial, just the standard formula. Okay? Anything else, members of the board?
We stand where?
No, okay, let me see.
It'd be a bifurcated decision.
Yeah, but let's see if there's anybody in favor or opposed to it. Is there anyone in favor of this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Madam?
Brother Niagara Memorial Association, we don't think this is like a 17 and 32. That's not a rooming house, that's a motel. That's not the district for that. Where are they all going to park? Are you going back to parking places? That's a very tight area. I don't think that you're going. We don't think that you're going. And that's our feelings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Is there anyone else opposed to this petition? So, we have it. The petition itself is for a special permit. So if we're going to go along the lines of the special permit, then I think that's the way we should go. First make the determination, is what they're looking for, if we have to determine that the extension of the use, because that's all that they're looking for, is substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. If we say yes, then we go on to the next level to make the determination that we want to grant the special permit to let them use it for that purpose. If they can't get by the first hurdle, then the hearing's over.
I'll make the motion that it is more detrimental to the neighborhood.
All right, so, John Frank makes the motion that it is more detrimental to the neighborhood. Do I get a second?
Second.
Second by Carolyn Morrisette. Any discussion on that part of the bifurcated hearings?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is it already defeated?
If... It'll be defeated, it'll be defeated if the board says yes, that it's more detrimental, then it's over.
But at two votes, does it get it? No.
We have to have the vote in the hearing, it just doesn't end.
No, no, I know it doesn't end, but I'm just asking effectively.
Effectively, I think it's done.
Okay. That's what I'm saying. I mean, I was going to agree with Mr. Frank anyhow, but I was just asking.
So we've got the motion that it's more detrimental, second by Carolyn Morrisette. Any discussion on the motion, except Greg's clarification? All those in favor? Opposed, none? Jim? Okay. So it's unanimous vote, you couldn't get past that hurdle on it, so your special permit is denied.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you. I'm sorry I took so much time doing the analysis. Agenda item number four. Stephen Elzado and Paula Elzado, 71 Stafford Road, Lot F2517, variance request to operate a beauty salon on the lower level of the existing four-family dwelling, waiving use requirements, in a local business BL district, lot size 10,875 square feet.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dan Agia, I'm the senior project manager at Sitech Engineering. The address is here in the city, Dartmouth, and Marshfield, Massachusetts. This petition has been filed on behalf of Stephen and Paula Elzado. Paula is here this evening to answer any questions that you may have regards to her proposal. She is... She and her husband are the owners of 71 Stafford Road. It is an existing four-family dwelling that sits on an oversized parcel of land in a BL district. You may recall...
This is the one, we rented the variance, she had a year to do it, she didn't do it. So if we come back in a year, let's see how it worked out in the neighborhood.
Right. And what ended up happening, just for the board's interpretation, what ended up happening was you had granted relief so that Paula could remodel existing living space in her basement. It's a three-family with a walkout basement, and the basement floor had always been used for a family living space. She had a daughter that moved up to college, they didn't need that much space any longer. She does have two smaller children, she had wanted to stay home, open up a salon in her basement. Relief was granted, everybody was ecstatic. However, in the decision, there is a clause...
Everyone except the lady next door, and that was why we did it for a year to see how it worked out.
I don't remember. Yeah, I don't remember about opposition.
There wasn't opposition.
There was some lady who was complaining about the parking, and we said, listen, come back in a year when you're done, make sure you're happy, and we'll...
Well, what ended up happening was the way that it got written into the decision was condition number one, rights granted under this variance to expire one year from the date of grant.
Because she wasn't sure what she was going to do.
Not, we'll look at it again in a year, or I'll come back, because normally it's, let's see how things go. No matter what she did, no matter what money she spent or what improvement she made, it would expire and she would need to come back here. So, we're back here. Even the requesting of an extension wouldn't have gotten her anything. But what we did find out in this year, through the building department and through that process, was that the cost of improvements, she had first been given some guidance regarding the handicap accessibility for the structure. It turned out later that her home would not meet those requirements, and she was only to have to spend some substantial money to make it that. So, all those things said, some work was done, some plumbing work was done, she actually did pull a building permit. In any event, the salon has never opened. About 80% complete, except for the handicap accessibility and some plumbing.
Which we got done last week, so handicaps...
Sorry.
So, the relief had expired, so that brings us back to you again. At that time, we were allowed two salon chairs, hours of operation limited to Wednesday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Saturday from 7:00 to 3:00. We're basically here asking for almost the exact petition, except with the number of chairs and the hours of operation. She would like to go to three chairs in order to offset the additional costs of renovations in creating the salon. And then also be open on... Is it Saturday is the additional day?
No, she's open on Saturday, 7:00 to 3:00.
On, is it Monday and the Tuesday?
I think it was the Wednesday, I think it was the Wednesday that we added.
So what do you want to have hours now?
No, you have Wednesday through Friday. Tell me what you want, tell us what you want.
Well, she had Wednesday through Saturday.
I would like a Tuesday through Saturday, if that's capable, please.
Same hours, fine, 9:00 to 7:00 and 7:00 to 3:00.
9:00 to 7:00 is, is great, yeah.
Okay, and 7:00 to 3:00.
So, I know traditionally, I don't, I don't let me be, don't let me interrupt too much, but traditionally most, here's a, here's a lot.
Sorry, sorry.
It's okay.
Close on Monday.
On Monday. But, I don't want you coming back to tell me you want Monday, so if we made it Monday through Saturday, does that work? You don't have to open on Monday.
Yeah, that's fine. That would actually give her some flexibility.
I like, you know, I, I like to see Agia, I like to see you, but I really don't want you here for something like Monday, come back and see me.
And, on top of that, the biggest caveat is that, that one-year date of expiration-
Well, let's see if there's anybody in opposition.
Correct.
Because even if, even if we didn't have it, she didn't do enough to say that she acted on the variance and you were gonna do-
Absolutely, right, so it's almost as if no variance had ever been granted.
Correct. So that's your pitch?
Yes.
Okay. Members of the board, any questions? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Well, so, oh, Helen.
I'm gonna Rico, Brother Niagara Maplewood, you have to go wherever you wanna pop. They have no parking on Stafford Road. I know she has a small driveway, 'cause I went by and looked at it.
So let's see, let's see how they, let's see how they address the parking.
All right.
As, as we had discussed in the previous application, this is not a full-blown salon. There is an existing driveway to park in, and that portion of Stafford Road, there is on-street parking available on her side of the street across-
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Helen, can you hear what he's saying? So why don't you come- Helen, Helen, is that better?
I don't care, Helen.
Anyway, go ahead, you hear me? Go ahead, Dan, go ahead.
So again, as we had discussed in, in the previous petition, there is a driveway that currently allows her to have off-street parking for the dwelling unit itself. There is off-street parking along her frontage for an additional two vehicles. And if you notice, the location of this is, actually, on the grew-up diagonal across the street on Coral Street, but I don't remember the name of the little park, the green that's directly across the street.
Bradbury.
So we're, we're, is it Bradbury, that's what it is? So we're actually in a location, I know I should know. My grandfather used to feed pigeons in that park. So we're in a location where on-street parking is not a requirement of the surrounding area. Everyone in that neighborhood has off-street parking. We don't have dwellings across the street that require parking. Directly to the north of that park is the Rite Aid Plaza and Laundromat, they have all their onsite parking as well. Then we have Coral Street on the other side of the park, again, which has off-street parking and then also, excuse me, on-street parking as well. So the demand for parking for this three-seat salon, I cannot imagine would be a detriment to this neighborhood. Between the combination of onsite parking and on-street parking.
No, no, I'm asking, did you hear the, did you hear the response?
Yeah.
Well, let's, I, I mean, I don't, tell me about, madam, tell us about having three chairs in a salon.
So, I mean, with three chairs, if I had what, we didn't even mean, if I employed one person, or had one person rent a chair, we're not gonna work at the same time all the time. You have one car, two cars the most, they are gonna have parked at the same time. I've also looked across at Labor Ready and have spoken to him that if possible, even renting a space, he said, hey, he has a parking lot over there, and being able, and he, let me know, well, down the road we can talk about that. So, I just don't think that, I don't have tenants, my apartments are all one-bedrooms, none of my tenants have parking, so we have two cars, my driveway alone, it fits four, you know, so I don't see it being-
You're not prohibiting, you're not prohibiting your-
My tenants don't, do not have access to the driveway.
They do not?
They do not. So they can have cars, but again, I've had the house for years, we have a tenant very rarely who has a car, and they park in the front. So we have enough parking, even in the driveway, to support at least three to four cars, never mind the front of the house. And like he said, there's no houses, the house on the side of us, they have a driveway, they park in their own driveway. So we don't have a lot of, that whole front of my house is always open to parking.
Okay. Two chairs, what happens if you have two chairs? Does the, does your project fall apart? If we go back to the original variance?
Well, at this point, I mean, with the, with the handicap, the money that we put in with the handicap ramp, it would just, it really makes it hard-
The handicap ramp for the salon, or the handicap ramp for the tenants?
For the salon, because we already had it all in con, it was all contracted out, and we've, you know, had to have all the handicap bathroom put into the salon, so to be able to support that, to be able to have another girl, I almost need one chair, two chairs myself to operate, 'cause I have one person processing, another person sits in another chair. If there's another girl working alongside of me, it's pretty impossible to work with just two chairs, if I'm gonna have somebody else to help.
Mr. Chairman, could I offer that? If the board would see fit to grant the variance based upon two chairs, and could expand to three with an affidavit or signed lease for additional two off-street parking spaces within 200 feet of the property? So that way, if she were to be able to secure additional parking from Labor Ready in legal form, of course, through, through a lease or license, that that could be a condition of approval as well.
Okay. No, that's fine, maybe. We'll see what the board says about that, but that's, that's a possible solution to it. Helen, did you hear that?
Yeah.
No, I'm asked, listen, you're there in the neighborhood, we're not living there, so your input is valuable to us. I'm asking you the question because we had the variance-
It's not gonna work. That's just not gonna work.
Okay. So no ma, so no matter what they do, it's not gonna work for you? Okay. Okay, is there anyone else opposed to this petition? Members of the board?
I'm gonna make a motion to be granted with the new request, with the three, with the additional days going Monday to Saturday, the hours given, and the three chairs. And, at this point in time, I'm, I'm not gonna make a condition about getting two more parking spaces from the neighbor. I'm gonna go with the four spaces that she has available. Oh, sorry, I apologize, I don't have a mic here. I'm gonna make a motion to grant with the conditions of Monday through Saturday with the three chairs, and that the parking be utilized, at least four parking, off-street parking spaces be given for the business purposes.
Yeah, Greg, the, the times, I think, have changed. Monday, Monday through Saturday, Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 7:00? Is that what it is in Saturday, 7:00 to 3:00?
Yeah, yeah, which, what they said, I apologize.
No, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yep, yep, that's my motion.
Okay. Yeah, no conditions, that's it.
I don't, I'm not gonna be looking-
Okay, I just wanna be clear, no conditions, three chairs, that's it.
I don't want no affidavits.
Not come back a year, that's it, done.
No, it's done.
Okay? Second by Jim Corkins, all those, any discussion on the motion? No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five. Petition's granted with those conditions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
So, how, Mr. Agia?
Agenda, agenda item number five. 813 Broadway LLC, care of, uh- Chehane Eliyahu. 813 Broadway, Lot G2243. It's a var, somebody's gotta be, hey, how you doing? Variance request to allow the construction of a canopy over the fueling islands to overhang within five feet of the street line along Broadway, and two feet of the street line along Oak Street, and to allow retail sales and lottery in the store, and to allow the installation of a new, smaller freestanding ID sign in a new location to replace the existing fre-
I'm gonna use the bathroom, you, Mr. Saad, is that okay? I'll make sure I come back this time.
What, you're not gonna listen to the petition?
Is that okay?
No, listen, we can have a bathroom, but my question is, if you're leaving, then I'll have David's- So you're leaving, I'll have David Sabers go in to listen to. We'll see. Okay. So, the ID sign and a new location to replace the existing freestanding sign, and a special permit request to allow the alteration of an existing non-conforming use and existing non-conforming lot and structure, and the installation of a freestanding sign other than those permitted in the two-family residence district R4, lot size 3,939 plus or minus square feet. Good evening, sir, will you identify yourself for the record, please?
Good evening, my name is Anthony Bubba, I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Massachusetts, employed by AL Prime.
Wait, wait, I hear some whispering in the behind you. Boy, I don't like this room. Somebody saying something, you hear something? Okay, I don't know whether they can hear you or not, but I mean, it's just, go ahead, keep talking.
Sorry. Employed by AL Prime, we are working with the landowner to possibly try to improve the location, bring it up to date a little bit more, and hopefully make it look a lot better than it does now. The location is known as Troy City Gas, it's at the corner of Broadway and Arch Street, mostly the, abutted by residential. It's been a gas station, I think, for close to 90 years, and it's on a very, very small lot, as you mentioned, it's under 4,000 square feet. That size is so small, it's, it's really the smallest lot in the vicinity of that location. What we're looking to do is not necessarily change the location that much, we like to put a canopy over the gas islands, as opposed to the, the tattered shroud that's there now. Replace those light fixtures which create a lot of glare, they have, the lights are visible from the side, but the canopy will be able to put recessed fixtures that only shine down, and should reduce the glare and the approachment to abutting properties. We'd like to cut the building down, right now that building is L-shaped, and on the right side, if you're looking at it from the street, it's a two-story building, we'd like to take the second story off, and the L shape that where it extends out towards Broadway, cut it off so that the, the building is one straight rectangle. So we'll reduce the size of the building. Lot is an existing non-conforming, where that building doesn't meet the setback requirements for the rear and side. What we're asking for is a variance for the canopy, because it will be close to the street, I don't think that's untypical for gas stations where the canopies end up being pretty close to the sidewalk or to the street. I don't think that's gonna cause any issue-
It's the vertical overhang.
It's a vertical overhang, right, so you're not gonna get a tunnel effect, it won't hamper the visual effect of someone driving, they'll be able to see under the canopy and around. It's really just a protection for the weather. It provides a location for deinstallation of fire suppression system. We intend to make a self-service, there'll be a dry chemical fire suppression system there, should improve the safety of the, of the location in case there is ever any kind of emergency at the island. Piping and the tanks will be upgraded, the monitoring systems will be upgraded, the site will have new, new pavement. The ID sign presently overhangs the sidewalk, it's been there forever. We'd like to replace it, relocate that sign to the right side of property along the sideline. It'll be close to the street, but it won't overhang the property any longer, it will be shorter and smaller in size. We'd like that sign to have an LED face for the prices, but those will only change when the price change, there won't be like flashing images or moving, or no pictures or anything like that. The store itself-
But that's not, but that sign will not be overhanging, that'd be on your property.
Correct. It'll be, it'll be close to the property.
No, I got it, but it's not, we won't have the overhang anymore.
Correct.
Go ahead.
Correct. The store, right now, they do sell some, small amount of candies, cigarettes, and things like that inside. We'll clean all that up. Right now, there's a lot of excess storage, there's a lot of trash inside some of the areas, all that'll be cleaned out. We hope to renovate the interior so it looks nice and clean, we'll have all-new interior finishes.
So basically turning it into a convenience store?
It'll be a mar, yeah, it'll be a convenience store, but it's so small, it's really gonna be more of a mar. It'll just be chips and sodas, cigarettes.
I use the convenience store model just that when you think of a convenience store. Those, those are the activities, where right now you're selling potato chips and gum, maybe cigarettes, I don't know, but-
Correct.
That store inside would be renovated, and would be similar to a convenience store, those activities.
Yep.
And possibly lottery, too.
Again, it's a very small lot, that's unique, it's been operated as a gas station for a very long time, we're not looking to change that. I think we could consider this an enhancement or enlargement of the use, although we're not gonna increase the number of dispensers, we're not gonna increase the, the coverage of the lot.
You're gonna keep the two dispensers, or give it four?
Well, there'll be two, right now they have the two's old style, and they're gonna be two of the modern-
Which are really four dispensers, two on each, each dispenser has-
Four fueling positions.
Each dispenser has one on each side, so a total of four.
Yes. The number of fueling positions will be the same, four vehicles can fill now, four vehicles.
So that's not changing, Paula? Okay.
I think that this would allow the site to become more competitive, allow it to be maintained in a better manner, I think it'll be more attractive aesthetically to the neighborhood, I think it would improve the property values because of the fact that it looks better. It'll be safer for the environment, it'll be safer for the operation of the station and the people who trade at the location.
Thank you. Any questions, members of the board?
I just have a question about the new sign. The current sign is not illuminated up close to the opposite end of the property, if I'm not mistaken.
I think that there's indirect lighting that lights up on, that shines up on it.
Right.
The new sign would be internally illuminated.
And we're moving it to the far end of the property, which is now closer to-
It is closer to the-
Residents next door.
Neighborhood, yes. We looked at trying to move it to the corner, but because of the lot is so small and the way the driveways are, there was no way to do that.
I just have concerns for the neighbors, I don't know if there's anybody here.
Yeah, no, we'll hear, but, but I think one of the issues was, where right now you have some light infiltration, the canopy's going to have downward lighting, and-
I think, I think, yes, the, the lighting, overall task lighting of the site will be reduced, and the approachment of lighting to the abutting property should be-
And the singular, and the, the sign that we're talking about, as I understand it, is going to be strictly the prices with the LED, it's not going to have, we have a special on orange juice for-
Correct, but there will be an internally illuminated portion-
The whole sign itself.
Yes, that will have the brand, which will, right now is AL Prime.
All right.
Or proposed to be AL.
We got it. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Uh, yes.
Yes, sir, would you identify?
Mr. Servant?
Well, you can come down if you'd like to, you don't have to-
Okay, wow, thank you. My name is Mr. Servant, I'm the property owner next door to the gas station.
The residential, the residents?
Yes, and obviously I'd like to show you a couple of pictures, wanna have, if you have a chance to take a look at them?
No, you want, listen, you're in a butter, I wanna hear what you have to say, please.
Which, which next door, sir, are you, are you on Broadway, or you're on Arch?
I'm on Broadway.
Broadway.
My driveway separates the gas station and my property.
Okay.
Okay, as far as, as far as convenience stores concerned, I mean, this is pictures of, here, Frank. This is pictures of, of the way traffic is at the present time.
Sir, I, I realize that I, I don't have a, can I see it?
Oh, yeah, okay.
I don't know, I don't know whether my colleagues can see it down this end, but I don't-
All right. Here's the, this is my driveway right here, and this is the congestion that you get only with just a couple of cars. And if he wants to make a convenience store out of that thing, I have, as it is-
I've seen it, make sure, make sure that, we have members of the board, you're sorry. Okay.
That's what it looks like. And here's your sign that you're talking about.
Right, and then, but they're looking on putting the sign here.
Yeah, right in front of my, my driveway. Yeah, right in front of my, my driveway.
That's what I was curious.
Exactly, yeah. And this is what happens with, when they get the oil companies coming in, they block off my driveway and I can't get in or out a lot of times. I'm not saying all the time. This gentleman here that, that brought in the gas at this particular day, gave me enough room to get out. A lot of them block it off and I ask them to move it, they won't move. They're pretty stubborn about it. So I can't get anybody to cooperate with me and like the guys that are pumping the gas and stuff and ask them, you know, can you move the truck up more or come in a different angle to, to give me room to get out? But, and you know, as far as property is concerned, this is, this is what it looks like. It's been like that for years, which is, this is my driveway, that's his property. They, they never take care of the, never take care of the stone wall, whereas the gentleman that was previous owner always took care of it. They always had people come down and take care of the wall and.
It looks like this whole section, a part of the section's going to be removed. They're talking about removing that whole piece of the building, right? If I'm not mistaken. This section is going to be removed. This is his driveway. This is coming out.
But that's on top, that's on top of the wall.
The retaining.
Yeah, there's that much space. So I don't know whether or not they're going to take care of the wall. That's obviously something I was concerned about because it looks like hell on my property. But anyways, I'm concerned about the traffic. Like he said, it's only a small lot. You can only get two cars on here, three cars the most.
Okay, is there anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we know, is the fill place for the oil delivery or the gas delivery, is that going to give them more room if that part of the building is removed? Is it, is the filling area right in front of that?
It's not so much, is it, you're just talking about filling?
That way the truck could pull.
No, no, so, because what I was hearing, and that's what I was expecting a response about how the new tanks are going to be situated.
They're on his side, it looks like right there, filling tanks are going to be right there.
If you'd like, I could try to address the.
No, I do.
Mr. Savant's concerns. And I understand, I would be in the same position if I was in his place. We're hoping that, first of all, by removing a portion of the building and opening that area up, that we would be able to allow the truck to pull further into the property, not block the driveway, not block, and not, also not extend into the street.
Can you hear, can you hear what he's saying, sir?
Somewhere, yes.
I mean, you're, I mean, if you want to come sit down here and listen, it's better that you're here so you can listen to what he's saying because you came out to the meeting and you're a director butter. I want to make sure that you can give us the answer.
Okay, so to repeat what I just said. And to show you also, we're going to remove this portion of the building. I'm hoping that when we do that, the truck can come in and be contained completely on the property and not block your driveway. I think the location of the sign will help that situation also because I think what's happening is the way the sign is and the way Mr. Savant's driveway is, that people and the truck are presently using his driveway as a portion, they're cutting across his driveway to access the gas station.
That's what he's showing.
The sign is not, is going to prevent, they're going to have to go around the sign so that because of the sign, they won't be able to block the driveway.
They have to be parallel, not.
Correct. Now, we, we haven't determined the actual condition of the tanks and I may have overstated. We may not replace the tanks, we'd like to, but the tanks may stay, but the tank top equipment will be replaced. And at that point, I can certainly arrange the fills in a way that will make it easier for the truck to move out of the driveway. And we would accept the condition that during the fills, the truck cannot be blocking the driveway or extend into the street. That would not be a problem for us.
What time, what time do they get the deliveries?
Okay, it's mixed times. It's, you know, 10 o'clock in the morning, 11 o'clock in the morning, 3:00 in the afternoon. They vary.
But you're not getting the 7:00 in the morning delivery? Seven, the early morning, 5:00, 6:00 o'clock in the morning delivery or the 8:00, 9:00 o'clock at night delivery? Is that?
Well, I, I mean, it's not bothering me at 7:00 in the morning. But they do come in at night and it's not a, it's a, it's a late night, which that almost does not bother me.
Okay.
Typically because of traffic and because of the truck having access to the local roads, our normal delivery would be in the evening or even late at night, like.
They come in at 10, 11 o'clock at night, which is, which is fine, you know, sometimes we come home late, but it's, that's no big deal.
Well, we can limit, we can limit the acts, the timeframe on when they can deliver.
I think it's only a problem he's indicating if it blocks from getting in his driveway.
Well, unfortunately, you know, the time they block it is when I need to get it the hell out of there, you know what I mean?
No, I know, that's what I'm saying.
We go basically like, 11 o'clock, church every day. And guess what? There are 10:30, quarter of a minute. But actually, I'm a little concerned in one way about, again, the convenience store. And I say that only because from, on Broadway going south, on Broadway, where my driveway is located on the south side of the property, cars line up to get into, into the gas station, you know, and they block off my driveway trying to get in there because they're just parked there waiting. And, you know, you ask them to move and it's like, too bad. So I don't know if that's going to increase the traffic trying to get into a convenience store.
I know, but I think what we addressed was the news, is it the sign? The sign is going to prevent them from being in your driveway?
No, no, no. No, they're on the road before they get there. It's like they're two, they're two and three cars back.
Yeah, no, I got it, I understand.
Okay, so to address that, I'm hoping that the new dispensers, which will be able to dispense at a faster rate, will be able to accommodate and be more efficient as far as moving traffic through.
You know, the problem is people stopping to go into the convenience store, to buy lottery tickets, no, whatever else, you know, whatever else they're going to do. They're going to be there for a while. I say a while, you know, it's going to four, five minutes, but it just backs everything up and whatever.
Okay, that's happening now?
It's even, yeah, I just showed you.
No, that's what I'm saying, it's happening now.
And they're only selling cigarettes. By the way, all the cigarette butts are on my property. Sulfur.
No, no, I got it.
No, I, I know.
But I have it somebody wants to make an investment on truck. It sounds like they're going to spend some money doing some re.
Right, I understand. And I'm glad they are in a way because it's, obviously, it's a piece of junk right now.
It is, it's run down.
Oh, big time.
You've got five great minds here that are going to try coming up with a solution for you.
And we would, we would accept the condition that the wall needs to be maintained so that we can take care of that. That's not a problem.
Do you have a better picture of what the building is going to resemble once they tear down? Because I know you're taking the second floor off and this front bump out off?
Correct.
So it's just going to be a rectangular, small building in the back here?
Correct.
Now, does that, it doesn't open up parking all the way to the very back? The building still goes to the retaining wall all the way across? I mean, they, we could.
Go ahead.
I don't say it aloud, but either a vegetative border or a fence along this portion here might be a little more pleasing.
The lot is pretty tight and right now, two of the parking spaces that we show are right on that side along that, along that property line. I don't think we, I mean, if there was room there, we would agree to do that, but right now, between the tech excavation, which pretty much goes up to the property line and the parking, I can't.
Well, if not a vegetative border, how about a fence?
Yes, I said a fence or.
We would agree to that.
If you remember, we did this on, I'm trying to think, what garage it was, the hill, where we said, put a.
I think that was one of our, you said put the fence off, right? We would agree to that and also, as I'm looking at a picture now, I noticed that there is a green planting area that belongs to Mr. Savant that's along the wall. And if you wanted us to put screening in there, something taller, some arid body or something that would grow up, we would be happy to do that on his land if he agrees to that.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just concerned about the neighbor. He's got to live with this. And my, my other big concern is the sign. That's going to be an illuminated sign now lit up in front of your window.
I know.
So I'm looking at this.
Yeah, I know, I know, I'm thinking about that, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if we could get it, if there's another discussion we could have about non-illuminated and a non-internally illuminated sign. Because even if we do hours, we haven't even talked about hours of operation yet, looking at it. I, I just have that now, moving it from where it is now, which would be on this side where there's nothing, to right in front of his window is a problem I have, I think. And I think he'll have a problem with that.
I know, yeah. It's going to reflect right in my windows where, where we have the.
No, we all recognize that. We're trying to find some solution, have to address sign maybe non-illuminated. Because I don't know what the hours of operation are, because maybe they don't need illumination.
That's hard to do in the wintertime. I mean, it gets dark at before 5:00 PM and the station's obviously going to be open much later than that.
How much later? What do you, what do you think?
I'm not sure what the hours are presently, but normally the hours for our locations would range from somewhere in the vicinity of 5:00 in the morning to midnight and less than that depending on the traffic at the location. We'd normally try to seek 24 hours, but we can't use that at most locations.
At the present time, they close at approximately 8:00 at night.
Okay, well, that's a real problem. I don't know how to, I don't have a solution, maybe non-illuminated or, but you certainly don't want lighting up his living room.
If we, if we have indirectly illuminated, something that shines up on it, would that I mean, the LED portion would be illuminated, but I don't think that that's going to create a.
I don't think there's much light infiltration from the LED part. Having the sun outside your window 24 hours a day.
But we could possibly come up with some kind of a spotlight or something that is attached on the top pointing down or something on it. Otherwise, it would be completely invisible at night.
And why is it you cannot move it to the other side of the lot?
For, if you take a look at the layout of lot and the way the driveways are, the driveway on Arch Street is so close to the intersection that in order to put the sign, I mean, we could possibly put it in the same location where it is now. It wouldn't be best for traffic circulation on the site and it would be probably overhanging the sidewalk up again a little bit in order to make it work.
But you still won't be able to use a neon sign.
Is the canopy currently illuminated?
There is no canopy. There's a shroud there that has a big light fixtures on it.
I mean, is this going to produce more lighting than, than they do, than the sign?
Will the canopy produce more light?
Well, not the canopy, but I mean, will the sign produce more light than is currently being given by the. Are we really making, yeah, it's closer to him, but it may not, the total illumination may not be.
I, I would say that, it would be hard to say that it would be decreased, that the sign would be less than the existing lights. I mean, the glare might be less because you see that white, but.
Yeah, I don't know. So either we let the sign, no sign, we let them.
If, if we convert this to an LED only sign and put illuminated brand signs on the canopy, would that work? We normally don't put illuminated signs on the canopy.
What I want to do is get away from his house. I want to try making him as less impact as we can to the next door neighbor. The, the development of it, I think is not a bad idea, but the impact to director butter, to residents is a problem. So illuminated on them.
Does most of the traffic going in goes into the station coming from, going south, right? Because if we could illuminate the west side, I mean, or the north side of the sign without it bothering and then use a reflective.
The sign on the roof, we don't use the hall.
There you go.
So anyway, that's, so you think on the canopy, you can put the sign?
I think if, if we, if we put.
So you eliminate the sign from, from the abutter's house?
I think if a sign on the canopy, if we, we were, we were proposing to put a decal on the canopy as opposed to anything illuminated on three sides, so you can see it from, from the street and from both approaches. If we make the, make that an illuminated sign instead of a decal, eliminate the illuminated portion of the brand on the side here and have just the pricing, then I think that would probably work.
Yeah, the pricing is not going to have any light.
I think it's, with.
I'm sorry, it's wife.
That's my wife, Cherry.
I just wanted to say, why do they have to move the side? Why don't we leave it there?
From what it looks like, to get more flow, the, the sign is now in the middle of the area here and they want to move it over here, so there's.
But it's, the sign is not bothering.
That's what we don't want.
They want to put it here now.
Yeah, that's going to bother us.
The sign, the sign at the present time is not bothering traffic going in and out.
It's not bothering us either.
It's, it's, no, it's, it's almost like on, almost on sidewalk. So the cars that go to the pumps go between that sign and the pump.
Yes.
And so, I mean, as far as, you know, leaving it there, it should be no problem, is what I'm saying.
I, I understand. Let's see, let's see what the engineer is going to say. If he doesn't have anything, the board's going to vote because we're spending lots of time on, maybe doing the homework that should have happened before, the decision appeared before us.
I'm sorry. We could possibly locate the sign in that same location, would have to be much thinner. We obviously don't want that sign. We don't want it to say.
No, I understand.
Right, right, yes.
It's a very ugly sign, so we could possibly put a sign in that location, zero clearance to the, to the back of the sidewalk. I'm concerned a little bit about the setback to the, to the canopy. It'll be pretty close to the canopy, so we'll be able, we'll try to do something that will work between the canopy and the sidewalk and sit in that spot.
Probably doesn't have to be as, as high as it's now.
No, no, we want it to be shorter anyways.
Right, right, okay. So all you, all you would need is a spotlight on each side showing the prices.
It's not so much the prices, the prices are going to be an LED, whatever it's like. We're more concerned about the sign near your house.
Right, right.
I don't think, we haven't taken a vote, but my impression is there isn't a board member that wants a sign near your house.
Right.
I wouldn't have been up.
So we will try to locate the sign somewhere between where the sign is now and Arch Street. So it will be no closer to the abutters.
Yes. Site plan, site plan review and make it do it. That's correct. We're not going to do it now. Make it part of the site plan review if we're going to grant and let the planning board, knowing that we don't want it, prohibition against anywhere near the residence. Okay. All right? Is there anyone else opposed to this petition? Okay? So I have. Motion, okay, motion to grant, motion to deny, motion with conditions.
I'd like a motion to grant.
Okay, motion to grant. John Frank. Conditions.
Conditions. We, I would like, would like the sign not, not any closer to the abutter's property.
Okay, not any closer than existing some, to a butter's property.
Non, non-illuminated, non-illuminated, non-internally illuminated.
Non-internally illuminated, okay.
And then also for, I, I know they had mentioned something about either a vegetative border or fencing along that wall, the retaining wall where the driveway is.
Fence, fence a vegetative border along the driveway.
And that's subject to site plan review?
Subject to site plan review.
Those two standard conditions.
The two. The wall, the wall, the maintaining of the wall?
Well, that would be, that would be, yeah, along that.
That's going to be where they're going to do it.
Can we use two direct hours?
Hours of operation.
Yeah, what are your hours of operation? What do you want? He was, he was saying 24/7, but that's not going to happen.
What I, what I mentioned is that that's what we normally ask board book. But we can certainly go with, say, 18 hours or something like that if that would work.
So 18 hours starting?
And, and you're looking, you were looking for 5:00 AM until midnight was the.
Well, 18 hours would be maybe 6:00 to midnight or 5:00 to 11:00 in that ballpark.
I think 5:00 to 11:00.
We don't, we, again, we don't normally operate that long, but we'd like to, it depends on competition and customer.
Also, delivery hours?
It doesn't seem to be a problem, right?
It doesn't seem to be a problem, but during, during, only during hours of operation, I guess we should say.
Okay. 5:00 in the morning?
Fine.
11:00 at night?
Fine.
Hours of operation?
As long as they push it up.
Yeah, no, they push up. We're, they got the message that we don't want them in your driveway.
Yeah.
So hour, during, delivery during hours of operation.
Well, maybe we need to put a restrictive barrier so that trucks cannot park, since we're not getting, having the sign that was going to serve that purpose.
I was going to say only be done on, only be done on the property, but I don't know if the truck is going to fit.
This is, this is the zoning board of appeals. This is the zoning board of appeals. This isn't the engineering stuff.
I know. I think that'll cover it.
So, I think that will do it.
John, one question on the non-illumination. Are we going to give them the right to illuminate the pricing with the LEDs?
The LED for the pricing?
That would fall under illuminating.
But we're talking about the display sign.
Yeah, they are, well...
So, talking about the freestanding sign.
Freestanding sign. So, the pricing sign can be the LED, but the display sign or the name, the Monica sign, is going to be non-illuminated?
Non-illuminated.
Okay. Does that work for you?
Of course. I have a second.
John's motion, second by Jim Clarkins. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Granted with those conditions.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, the non-illuminated means non-internally illuminated, but we would be able to have a light or something.
You're going to be subject to site plan review. When you go to the site plan review, those technical issues with things that will be addressed there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The pricing sign is going to do the LED light. Agenda item number six, Durfee Trust Limited Partnership Care refers to development cooperation general partner. Durfee Street and Elm Street Lot N1027, variance request to divide the existing parcel lot into two lots with no change in the use in a central business district CBD. Lot size is 13,000 and 6,900.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Dan Agia from Site Tech Engineering, this evening on behalf of Durfee Trust Limited Partnership. This parcel before you is known as MAP N10 Lot 27. It's actually a combination of several smaller parcels of land, and as you can see, we have this somewhat odd-shaped parcel with 96 plus feet of frontage on Elm Street and existing 46.7 feet of frontage along Durfee Street.
I'm sorry, I could just interrupt. I'm familiar with Mr. Beckett from other meetings and boards. I'm not certain what your relationship this year, I don't know if I have a conflict.
I'm just going to be on behalf of the owner.
I think it's fine. He just says like as a facilitator broker and everything, so there's no financial interest at all. So, we have this L-shaped parcel that wraps around 307 Durfee Street. This is used now as a parking facility for a couple of different uses. This petition before you is strictly to create a lot line down the middle of the two. The only relief we're seeking is a frontage variance along Durfee Street, where 50 feet of required frontage is by statute, and we only have 46.71 feet of frontage along Durfee Street. The current uses will stay the same. We will probably be re-scribing them. This is in an attempt to allow the users of parking areas to own the parcels that they park on. There will be cross easements that allow vehicular access and pedestrian access through the parcel from Elm out to Durfee as it currently does now. So, exactly same use, parking. Excuse me, the only waiver that we are seeking is that frontage along Durfee Street.
It's going to stay as the parking lot.
That's it.
You're going to split the two lots up, and I'm sure you know that there's that easement that goes from Durfee Street, 10-foot wide, up and around.
Amazing.
And I'm looking at attorney Brilliant because he hasn't said anything, but I think his client, a former client, Dr. Braunhardt, I think had the benefit of the use of, because the Elm Street pops out on Elm Street. So, I guess if everybody's...
What is the more complicated parcels of land?
It is. And the only reason why I know it is I remember doing the title and knowing that there was that 10-foot, and there was a little bit of dance that went on there.
Yes.
But other than that, all you want to do is just put that line and have parcel one and parcel two.
That's correct.
But no change in use?
No change in use, no construction potentially other than resurfacing of the property.
Yeah, that's just what I was, along this proposed boundary line between the two parts, there will be nothing built, it will still be flat surface, straight across. Just the lines, yeah.
Even though the property line is going there, those seven spaces still need access to the driveway to the north of it, that laneway.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
So, that's why there will be cross easements that allow vehicular traffic across both parcels. That's all. So, the only relief we're seeking is that frontage along Durfee.
And again, this is just the zoning board, so we're saying, here you go, split the thing into the lots, and you can go with the other stuff. Let the lawyers work out and the engineers.
We don't want to make it more complicated.
No.
Okay. Yes. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Motion to grant.
Last motion to grant by Frank, second by Clarkins. All those in favor? So, that one's granted with those non-conditions. Number seven, 07, Brayton Realty, Inc., care of Jody Olivera, President, Napoleon Street Lot, Lots G161, 41, 46, 47, and 48. This is a variance request to divide the existing parcel of land into two parcels and to construct a single-family dwelling on each lot in a single-family residence district R8. Lot size is 6,473.6 plus or minus square feet and 6,543.5 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening. And again, for the record, Dan Agia with Site Tech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Brayton Realty. I guess I want to pass this down.
Can I stop you? I don't want to be a figure, but I'm going to stop. It's only for the singular lot down here. It's not all of these lots.
That is correct. That's what I want to explain now. Okay, correct. What I'm handing out to you now is relief that was granted, or plan that was the result of relief granted back in, I believe, '02, which I have a larger copy of the plan here. At that time, the applicant owned multiple, a large parcel of land that wrapped around Napoleon Street. And on that petition, you see the creation of five single-family lots via relief granted in '02. So, we had five non-conforming lots wrapping around Napo, excuse me, Napoleon Street, wrapping around the corner of Sterling. That relief had expired. The applicant, who at the time was actually Alan Jaraback Jr., had not acted or constructed any dwellings on the parcel, so those lots had merged. The Jaraback family had came back to me in disposing of a number of Alan Jr.'s parcels, and we took a new look at this piece as a whole. So, I'm going to hand out to you, we'll take one. So, we looked at it a little bit differently where, okay, and we could come back in seeking the identical relief that was granted for the five total lots. However, after speaking with them, I explained to them that because of the shape of the property, that we could do things probably a little bit better. And what we did was we created, as you see on the approval not required plan, that you have a total of four lots, 1, 2, 3, and 4. 1, 2, 3, complying completely with the zoning district of 80 feet of frontage and 8,000 square feet, and then leaving a large parcel four, which is the long, thin parcel. What that did for us is it required or has allowed us to minimize the relief that we're requesting from this board. So, what we've asked for is now just come back before you with one parcel of land, and because of the long, narrow shape of it, the long, narrow shape of it is the long, narrow shape of it regardless of what we cut out. So, we had cut out all the larger, deeper lots, and we were left with this long, thin piece. So, the relief that we're seeking tonight is that we have requested two frontage setback requirements, 80, 68 feet, and area from 8,000 to 6,400 square feet.
That's, that's the only relief you're looking for?
Well, the building setbacks that we have shown with a 15-foot front yard and a 20-foot rear and the sides, because of the very shallow depth of this, that relief would be required whether this was 1, 2, 3, or 4 lots. So, what we did was rather than come back in and ask for that total of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lots in that fashion, minimize the relief, creating as many conforming lots as we could and minimizing how many lots were not compliant.
Okay.
That's all.
And that's what you want to do then?
That's correct.
One lot, we're going to get two lots, and we're going to waive frontage, and we're going to give you some dimensional side yard requirements.
That's correct.
Any questions, members of the board? Because it wasn't all those lots that you had listed, but you had them all.
Well, technically, now they're still all listed as assessors map and lot numbers, so they are currently all owned by the one person.
But the only, the only item before this board are the 4A and 4B.
Correct.
Not all of, not all of that we're listing.
Well, if you look at the A&R plan that we've had endorsed since, only parcel four, as shown on that A&R plan, is what comes before this board. That's why we've pulled it out again, Lot Four, Napoleon Street. So, lots 1, 2, and 3 are cut out legally conforming, and I think they may have actually been conveyed or in the process of being conveyed. So, we're only here before you for what the new Lot Four was.
That's what I want to be clear with, because what was published, have the other assessors maps.
Because they were technically city-wise, still all combined as one parcel.
Got it. Okay. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Motion to be granted.
Motion to grant with the, Greg, can we specify what we're waiving? Frontage, frontage waiver, side yard waiver, rear yard waiver?
Condition upon waiving, all app to a lot requirements as...
As shown on our plan.
As shown on the plan.
All right. Motion to grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John Frank. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, none? Okay, that petition's granted.
Thank you.
With those conditions. They're going to be separate, separate as water and stuff, separate utilities out there?
Absolutely. And they're all subject to site plan review.
Condition, wait a minute. So, subject to the site plan review?
It will be anyway, whether you make it a condition on it.
I got that, but I just want to make sure that there's no issue about that. It's going to site plan, okay.
More of a motion or...
It has to go anyway.
Okay.
It's fine. Do you need a break? Is that what you said? So, the next one is going to be 08, Joseph Morgado, 294 and 264, North Barley Street, Lot L01, 137 and 140. Variance request to divide the existing parcel into two lots, leaving existing structures on one lot to be used as a contractor's yard and go with, with garages and office space, and constructing a new single-family dwelling on the other lot in a multiple-family residence district M. Lot size is 20,000 plus or minus square feet and 5,000 square feet.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Dan Agia, here this evening on behalf of Joseph Morgado, who is the property owner of both 294 and 264 North Barley Street. You'll see that there are two addresses for each of the properties and two assessors mentioning lot numbers, because technically, the city still has them listed as separate parcels. There was a mobile home on the smaller lot, the 5,000-square-foot lot, up until around 2013, and was finally removed once Mr. Morgado was able to purchase it. Again, this is in an M district that requires 5,000 square feet of area and 50 feet of frontage. So, the first relief that we're here asking for, and the reason for it, is that once that existing mobile home was removed from parcel L137, L137 and L140 technically would merge because of the non-conforming nature, lack of frontage for L1137. So, really, this is one parcel.
They did merge.
We've listed them separately because the city, again, still has them listed separately, separate cards, separate tax bills. However, the first relief that we're here seeking is the re-subdivision back to the original lot lines. Now, again, 50 feet of frontage is required in this district and 5,000 square feet. So, we have the 5,000 square feet as that lot always did. The 48.72 feet of frontage is where the issue comes, where 50 feet is required. What I'd like to call to the board's attention, and some of you are very well aware of this situation, some of you may not be, L1140 is a registered parcel of land. L1137 is not. So, you would say, well, how come you just can't cut 2 feet off of L1140 and convey it to L1137? In a perfect world, you're 100% correct. However, that takes approximately a year, I know the chairman knows, and to do this, probably $8,000 to convey 2 feet of land in that timeframe. L1140, which is 264 North Barley Street, has had two separate reliefs granted at two different times for a couple of different uses. It's predominantly been used as...
Welding shop.
Welding shop and some auto repair. If any of you are familiar with Mr. Morgado's work, who is here this evening, and it's a shame that this is actually happening, but I guess he's due his retirement. Nationally recognized welder of fine wrought iron gates, fencing, Newport mansions, all over the country, the work that this gentleman has done. He is, however, retiring. That type of work and welding work is not a craft that continues along. So, for probably five years, we've looked at this property in different ways to dispose of it, either through condominiums similar to what was built next door or a bunch of other things. He did have someone that's recently come to him and wanted to purchase the property, as is with the buildings that are on the property, and use it as a contractor's yard, store, excavating equipment, few dump trucks, things of that nature, clean up the site, use it for some office space. So, the change in use, you would say, might actually be a special permit. However, because the existing uses were actually granted through variance, they're considered conforming uses. So, we're not provided the special permit statute of changing a non-conforming use, because the existing uses are actually considered conforming uses. So, we do need zoning relief to allow the change in use to occur. It's clearly not more detrimental than what's happening on the site now. So, that's, the two separate issues of the relief that we're seeking. One, that we would like to do the subdivision and not have to go through the land court process, making this have 50 feet of frontage. The proposed dwelling on the site will meet or exceed the building setback requirements for the M district. So, there will be a new home built on that lot, the 5,000-square-foot lot, and will meet all of the building setbacks. And the use that will occur on 264, the larger parcel, the 20,000-square-foot parcel, four times larger than what's required in the district, we are representing to you that it will be a less intense use than what currently happens on the property. That's all.
But that usage, just walk me back to the larger usage of the contractor's yard. You're going to continue as a contractor's yard?
Well, we want, we want to now move it and use it as a contractor's yard. There is currently relief to be either an auto facility or, well, there have been two different buildings.
So, it's really a use variance on 140 that you're looking for?
Correct, into a contractor's yard.
No, no, I got that. So, it's not an expansion of the activity that Mr. Morgado has done?
No, no, I wish it was, because then it would be a special permit.
That's where I'm going.
Right.
So, you need the variance, you need two, you need a variance on two specific items. One, break it off into L1137, non-land court, short of frontage, 1.3 feet.
Correct.
And the other one is we want a use...
Correct.
As being contractor's yard.
That's correct.
In the M district, okay. I got it. Yeah, I don't know. No, I'm laughing about it because I can see that one coming back and say, let's cop it up into other lots.
Well, again, we had looked at it a number of times, even over zoning changes, of whether to do multifamily dwellings or condominiums.
No, but I guess you could do that as a matter of right, so I didn't want to put any conditions on, no further subdivision.
No, yeah, no, correct. Because that, want to make it back at another time and, you know, divide it up in a conforming use.
Members of the board, any questions? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. Going to get a motion to grant?
I'll make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant by attorney Brilliant, second. Second, Jim Clarkin. Any, okay, any discussion on the motion? None? All those in favor? Any, any conditions, Greg? Do you want to put the site plan review or... I think it's going to go to site plan review anyway, but...
Well, they're not really going, they're not building anything.
Well, we're going to build on L1137.
Oh, no, that, yeah, for a single-family home, that will require site plan review anyway. I figured you meant for the larger one.
No, I don't think...
Yeah, that's fine. Sub the site plan. We doing on all of them now? That's why I haven't been saying it.
Well, we were having this discussion. I think you have to do it because the board has the authority to do it. It's not, it's not in the ordinance, it's not in the rules and regulations. We have to make that determination. But on L1140, the lot block, there's no site plan review, but on L1137, which is going to be the construction of a house, because it's vacant, is the representation that you're making, so I don't have to worry about any demolition of anything that's there. Okay. So, that's your motion?
With the condition, yep.
Okay. That's the motion with the condition. All those in favor? Opposed, none? That petition's granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Morrissey. Is it oh nine you don't want to vote? Hey, hey. So we're gonna, she, Attorney Morrissey can't listen to zero nine. David, you're gonna be voting on this one, okay? So, zero nine, John Moniz, Nancy Moniz, one ten Hemlock Street and one forty Hemlock Street, lots R thirteen, twenty-three, and twenty-seven. Variance request to divide the two existing parcels into three, leaving an existing single-family dwelling on each of the two parcels and constructing a new single-family dwelling on the third parcel, waiving dimensional requirements in a single-family residence district.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Dan Aguirre regarding one forty Hemlock Street, owned by John and Nancy Moniz. Currently, uh, the Moniz family lives at one forty Hemlock Street, which is R thirteen, twenty-seven, which is currently a parcel of land with fourteen thousand square feet and one hundred and six feet of frontage. Later on, a few years after purchasing that property, the home at one ten Hemlock Street came up for sale. R thirteen, twenty-three, which has a hundred and fifty-two feet of frontage and twelve thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven square feet. So we are in a S district with a minimum frontage requirement of one hundred feet and twelve thousand square feet. If you see on your plan, you will see, although it's probably light on yours, you'll see a diagonal line, um, very light.
Yeah.
That says existing line. That is the existing dividing line between the home at one forty and the home at one ten. So we have half of the lots, the outsides are perfectly ninety-degree corners, and then we have this diagonal line that's approximately forty-five degrees in between the two lots. And if you look at the title and the, and the research behind this, that diagonal line at one point in time actually extended straight up north through Florence, down through Hemlock. It was actually the, the larger dividing line between two very large parcels of land in the hundreds of acres. And when they did these separate subdivisions over the years, there's always an M to one and then the beginning of the other. The line happened to be this diagonal line that, that's now left these two odd-shaped lots. So Mr. Moniz came to me and asked me to prepare, um, a petition to come before the zoning board of appeals, allowing the subdivision as shown, where he would now be able to construct a new single-family home in between the two existing single-family homes. As you go out there now, you'll see this expansive land area that's basically side yard for one forty to the north and then to the south of one ten. But we have this diagonal line that, that actually creates an odd situation of, uh, of who owns what and where the occupation actually begins. He is in the process of selling one ten. He does have a tenant that's lived there for a number of years and has wanted to purchase the property. So prior to the conveyance of that one ten, he wanted to do something to resolve the property line issues, get rid of that diagonal line. So he had felt at that point, since he was going through that exercise, to attempt to come before you and resolve this odd-shaped parcel by creating another parcel of land in between, still providing adequate side yard setback to the existing single-family dwelling at one forty of eighteen feet, where fifteen feet is required. And then on parcel one at one ten, we would be thirteen feet to the front corner of the house and eight feet to the side steps. The proposed dwelling being constructed on what we're calling parcel two would meet the required setbacks of twenty-five feet in the front yard and fifteen feet on the sides. This does require frontage relief from one hundred feet that's required down to ninety-five and then eighty-two for the two others. And then also an area variance from twelve thousand square feet down to ninety-nine for parcel three, eighty-six for parcel two, and eighty-five for parcel one. But that would allow this interior parcel of land to be utilized for something other than very large side yards. Again, where we had two subdivisions coming at each other from different directions, having homes built on each one and having this excess no man's land in between the two properties. There is an existing shed on the property, and as you can see, we met the required four-foot setback to a structure of that sort, and that shed would ultimately be conveyed with parcel two if the petition were to be granted.
Okay. Thank you. Members of the board, any questions? Anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? So the relief that's granted, we're in an S district. They need twelve thousand square feet. They're creating three. I guess you had two conforming lots, now you create three non-conforming lots, but you have this very large, unique piece of property. So what do you want to do?
I'll make a motion to grant. I'll make a motion to grant.
Okay. Motion to grant. Brilliant, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, John Frank. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Two, three.
Two standard conditions, like.
You've got the two standards.
The shed is not being raised.
Correct.
Site plan, no.
The line was actually created in a manner to make sure that the shed would, could go with parcel count, so it didn't have to be, fairly.
Standard condition would say raise.
I would, we would raise it normally, but he's, he's saying he wants to leave it. He's got the four-foot side yard, so it stays. How do I, oh, wait a minute. What's this? Oh, separate, the, John, separate, separate utilities.
Separate utilities.
Okay. So let's see. So Brilliant, yes. Frank, yes. Those are the conditions. The vote was Brilliant, yes. Frank, yes. Clarkins, no. Saber, yes. Aside, yes. Okay. So that petition is granted. Vote four to one. Clarkins, no. Everyone else, yes.
Thank you very much.
Behind, it's that, that petition. Agenda item zero, ten, zero, ten. Let me get Carolyn back in. Six, oh. Sixteen eleven Bay Street Lot A eighteen four. This is a special permit request to use the premises for sale of used automobiles in a commercial mill district. Lot size fifty, fifty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-eight plus or minus square feet.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carl Garcia. I'm here on behalf of Bay Street Realty LLC. We are requesting the, um, what you just said, yeah.
You want to sell used cars in this commercial mill district?
Yes, sir.
So we're doing it as a special permit because we're expanding the pre-existing non-conforming use of that property?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How many cars are you gonna have?
We're looking for twenty.
Have you gotten a license yet? Have you been to the licensing board?
They told me we first need to.
You wanted to come here first?
First, come here first, and then we've got the licensing board.
Okay. So if this board says you can have up to twenty, doesn't mean the licensing board has to grant you a license for twenty?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure you're clear on that.
Yes, sir.
What are your hours of operation?
Um, probably eight AM to six PM, six-thirty. Eight to seven AM, just to say.
Eight to seven. How many days a week?
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday.
Sunday, uh, Sunday, Saturday, eight to twelve. And that's it.
Eight to twelve. Any illum, any signage? Illuminated signs, um? My understanding is you have an auto body shop.
Yes. I have an auto body shop that is a property that's, what's next door. So, I mean, it'd be probably a sign on, on the, the building, which is, um, about thirty-two hundred square feet. Yeah, the plans in front of you. So that, I mean, it'd probably be a sign on the building, and there's like a sign, there's an existing sign there already, so we would, you know, we.
So you're gonna use that existing sign?
Yeah, there's existing signage, that's it.
So you don't need new signage?
No, sir.
Okay. One, one, go ahead, Jim, John, that's.
I was just gonna say, the cars are gonna be stored in the back, or they?
No. If, if you look at the, the plans that you have in front of you, well, some of them would be in the, um, along, if you look along here, you could park some along here, and then the rest can get parked in the back. The front, the front is all, um, grass and ice, so I wasn't, I wasn't playing, right? I'm using that for, um, you know, I, I use the existing asphalt. I mean, it's really. It's really just to, to subsidize the existing business. Being in the auto body business, you sometimes acquire vehicles. I think that's the easiest way to say it.
Okay.
So it's just gonna be used in conjunction with what you do now?
It's gonna be used in, it's gonna be used in conjunction. You know, some communities, your auto body license is, um, part of your auto sales license. In Fall River, you actually have to have a separate address and it's a little bit of a separate process.
Yeah, we are gonna go through that process, because all this board's doing is, if we grant it. I just want to be clear, because I don't want, if we grant it, then you're gonna say, well, the, the zoning board overstepped its bounds into licensing and.
I, I wish it was that easy. I wish I could just go with one, but I understand the process. Thank you, sir.
Maybe I should ask David Saber if he has any input that we should know about.
I think it's fine.
Thank you, David.
That's enough input. He's in the business. He knows.
Anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. Greg?
Motion be granted.
Second.
Any conditions? Do we need to put any conditions on anything? Second by Frank. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hours of operations that he stayed.
Hours of operation, Monday through Friday, eight to seven, Saturday, eight to twelve.
And I hope to guide it before seven. I hope to guide it at like six, five, but.
So did your wife.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has to be limited to twenty jobs. So that's the motion with those conditions, Greg.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That petition's granted. With those conditions. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very, thank you very much, everyone.
Attorney Ainsworth, zero eleven Nelson Bissette, eleven sixty-five New Hall Street, lots D ten thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five. This is an administrative clarification motion for the board to make findings and amend decision with respect to the decision of the zoning board of appeals issued on October sixteenth, two thousand fourteen in the matter of Nelson Bissette for variance request to divide the property into three lots and construct a single-family dwelling on each lot, waiving dimensional requirements in a single-family residence R eight. Lot sizes five thousand eight hundred plus or minus square feet. Good evening, Attorney Ainsworth.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Members of the board, Mr. Chairman. We were here in October, you know, two thousand fourteen, and we requested a variance to divide the parcels into three lots. The board granted a variance for two lots with the standard conditions that the variance be exercised within one year. And now we filed an affidavit saying the utilities had been separated. We filed a notice of variance with the land court in February. We went before the planning board and got the plan signed off on the planning board in April, and then we mailed everything to land court, and it sat in land court until about five days before the year, at which time they wanted the plan revised. So we went back to the planning board, and then we went back to land court. In the meantime, we had also filed a bio. We sent up the new deeds to the new buyer, two certificates issued. They finally issued the two certificates, but it was beyond the one year. However, we had done substantially everything within the year.
Just the filing in land court, I think, was substantial.
Right.
Acting on the variance, so you need a finding from the board to say that the variance that was granted is in force and effect. You acted on it. There are two lots, and you're fine.
And as to the affidavit, the house got demolished. So you wanted an affidavit saying utilities were separated, but the utilities were buried.
You couldn't do the affidavit, because you read it literally and said, there's no house, so there's nothing for me to do an affidavit on.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
Three lots or two?
No, two lots.
Says three.
The original petition was for three lots. They came before the board. We granted permission for two lots. And it was the two lots that went up, that got approved, but land court took.
Oh, no, I understood that. I wasn't sure.
No, it was only two, only two lots, and just administratively, uh, we just need to have the finding to make sure that Mr. Ainsworth's client can deal with it without raising any issues of not having the affidavit, because the house got raised, so they couldn't say separate utilities. So that's where we are with it. Uh, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Just a clarification.
Yeah, go ahead.
We, we both, well, I abut, he abuts, he's next to.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we're still at two, right?
Only at two. The only issue that existed was somebody, I believe, looking at the title said, you didn't file your affidavit, uh, that utilities had been separated, and you didn't do something within the year. They couldn't do it within the year because land court didn't act, and the house got raised. So Attorney Ainsworth said, I don't need to do an affidavit, because I can't say I separated it. There's no house there. Other than that, it's two lots, that's it.
So this is still just an extension of?
That's it. To clarify, that's it. There's nothing, there's no three lots, two lots, that's it. And now there's no house.
Right. Did one of those, I live across the street. Did one of those lots already sell? There was, there was a real estate?
They were both transferred through land court. It's hard to explain, because it's land court, but land court issued two new certificates.
It's two new certificates, and there's, that's it.
Because it was a transaction, and they held the rules last year.
May have been last year. Could have been sold from Bissette to something else.
September two thousand sixteen?
But whatever, the most, the most I got conveyed were two lots.
Okay. That's it, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just, I, I don't like this. Go ahead.
Motion to?
We have, we're gonna have a finding, administrative motion that they acted, and, uh, Mr. Ainsworth, condition number two, I think it was, that said you have to file the affidavit is removed because the house was raised.
I saw moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Ainsworth. Thank you for your patience. Zip, this is Nightingale Street, Jamie Duff, Attorney Frank.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Wait, 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 stop. If this is the Jamie, I can't listen to it.
Oh, that's right.
John Frank will do it, and David Saber will be holding it.
Anytime you're ready, Mr. Chairman. Trying. There's not enough room. Okay. Agenda item zero one two, Jamie Duff, fifty-four Nightingale Street, lot D five to eight. Variance request to divide the existing property into two lots, leaving existing single-family dwelling on one lot and constructing a new single-family dwelling on the other. Waiving dimensional requirements in the single-family S district, lot size ten thousand square feet each.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Arthur Frank. I'm a lawyer with Adresses at two oh nine Bedford Street, Fall River, Massachusetts. And I represent your petitioner, Jamie Duff. So the history regarding this property, uh, it is, it is no, it is now owned by the estate of Carl Grimsley. Mr. Grimsley passed away last year. His personal representative, Sandra Pacheco, and Mrs. Pacheco offered the land up for sale to, to close out the estate. Mr. Duff put in an offer, based most importantly upon the assessor's map for this property, which depicted the parcel as having two hundred and forty feet on the road and a hundred feet deep, meaning.
I'm sorry, if I could just interrupt.
That was, my question is, we, in my homework on this, I was planning on doing this last month's meeting. We were going through all this information, and I don't even think we can move forward with this application, because.
It's signed.
Mr. Grimsley signed it, uh, two months ago, and he died last year, so.
I don't believe Mr. Grimsley signed it. His personal representative signed it on his behalf.
His personal representative signed it on his behalf. The statute does not require the signature of the owner.
That just has his name signed. Doesn't say on behalf of...
Well, let me just finish, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
This petition was prepared by a non-lawyer, Mr. Duff, with the assistance of Mrs. Pacheco. I'm sure neither one of them know the complexities of preparing a proper signature block. There is no requirement in the statute that the owner of the property has to even sign. The owner's name must appear on the application.
I attest that all the above information is true, signed by owner's signature and it's his name. So that brought my concern to another level. I don't want to go forward on an application that might possibly be incorrect or in error. And then for your client's behalf and then on our behalf, this might end up in a different situation. I just, that was my concern and I don't even know if we can move forward. And I wish if David was here so I could ask a little more questions. Is there a way...
Well, I know I once had a situation where we didn't have the owner's consent in hand because it had to go out of state. And the board did approve the zoning relief requested contingent upon a formal written authorization by the person in possession or the owner of record. You could make that a condition of any relief that you would grant tonight.
It has to be done before we go forward.
Yeah, I just have a, I have a serious concern that this is an invalid application with it being signed by somebody who's dead. If it would be on behalf of, if it was...
Again, when lawyers, non-lawyers prepare documents...
I understand that, but that's why they have lawyers, right?
I only put into this case just recently. It's not my work.
I understand.
It's not my work.
But I just, I'm not comfortable moving forward on this application, but I don't think the application is valid by that purpose. I'm not a lawyer either, but I just, I have concerns that it's just not a valid complaint, a valid application. So if we could, if you want to choose to table it or move forward, I just think this is not... I'm not comfortable moving forward on it as the chairman, so I don't even think we should even hear any evidence on it. I think it needs to be addressed somehow, some way. But I don't think that's up for us to look at.
The chair is inclined to table it until I can get a statement from the personal representative.
I would at that point in time move to table, subject to the Mr. Frank getting an affidavit from the personal representative of the estate to be submitted prior to the next meeting. This way, we don't have to have the re-advertising. We can table it to the next meeting.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to...
No, that's fine. And then you'd be comfortable with the...
I just want to make sure that everything is proper before we move forward.
I understand.
And for your client's behalf and ours.
I understand. Again, this is what happens when laypersons try their best to, you know, to fill out our forms.
I have, and there's just, I mean, we're not opening the... There's just some letters of opposition here and I haven't even opened it up to the audience yet. Is there anyone here? Yeah, we're not taking evidence. I just want to make it clear. I don't know if there's anybody here in favor of this. We're going to...
Reposed.
We're going to propose to table this to the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to table, giving the attorney time to get an affidavit of the owner slash personal representative thereof to be submitted to the office prior to the next meeting.
Second.
There a second? All those in favor?
opposed.
See you in September.
Agenda's getting longer already.
So what number was that?
Eight.
That was 12? Okay. Are we ready?
Everybody get it?
Yes, sir.
013 Point Signs Inc., on behalf of CEA South Coast LLC, 374 William Canning Boulevard Lot D 1992, variance request for permission to install a pylon sign 100 feet tall with electronic message center of 351 square feet, 351 square feet, per face, waiving dimensional requirements in a local business BL district. Good evening, sir.
How rich are you? Point Signs, on behalf of CEA and South Coast Marketplace. We had been asked by CEA to create a solution for what they perceived as an issue with visibility to the shop, to this new shopping center that's being redeveloped. So we did several site tests to determine what it would require to be able to develop a design that would be visible from Route 24. The tree line that has grown along 24 is resulting in trees that are pretty high and provide the visibility and the clearance that we were trying to accomplish would require a 100-foot tall sign. Since then, which is basically this design that we have before or similar to that. Since then, we've been able to work with the city and Mass DOT to open up visibility through the tree line along 24 with some selective landscaping and thinning of the trees along that side of the highway. And so with that being accomplished, will be accomplished, we'd like to propose a change to our proposal and I'd like to pass that drawing out today.
Are we still going 100 feet high?
No.
Because I was thinking, you said DOT and that was one of my questions. I think your proximity to the highway was going to require DOT approval of the sign. We, I think the zoning, for me, it was a question whether or not we had jurisdiction because I think within 200 feet of the way, the public way, the state public way, DOT has jurisdiction over that. But that's, we may need some permits from them.
We would not need a permit from Mass DOT on the outdoor advertising board because this is an on-premise sign. There was a bill...
But I thought it was still the visibility issue. Go ahead. I'm listening. It's your sign. I mean, you're before the zoning board. I'm not DOT, so.
So we've taken a different approach, creating a stable-sided sign that would be parallel to the highway. One of the situations where we're working with the design on is the highway's about 10 to 12 feet higher in grade than the parking lot area. So the goal here is to have this gateway-style sign parallel with the highway that'll be, will be visible for northbound and southbound travel. It will be located at the northern end of the property as shown on the site plan. And the last sheet that you have in your package shows you the satellite view of the property, the off-ramp, Area 24, and areas that are outlined in red and blue are some of the designated areas that will be addressed by Mass DOT for the existing landscaping so that the sight lines will be improved and the proposed more modest design will be visible and effective.
So the height of this new sign is 42 feet.
It's actually below the trees.
We're going to have white LED illuminations.
Yes. Page two gives you an indication of the day and nighttime illustration of what this design will look like. It's the intention of CEA to provide some decorative landscaping at the base of this design so it really enhanced the appearance. The idea is to create an appealing design from the highway identifying the shopping center.
The calculation of the faces of the sign, do they still...
Much, much smaller.
Much smaller.
So this is, the sign area on the new design is 276 and a half square feet.
277 square feet.
277 square feet.
Each side?
One side.
One side?
Totally one side.
So it's only going to be one-sided?
Correct.
Okay. Only visible off the highway?
Correct.
Illumination, is on to ambient light will kick on? Is that how?
Yes, yes. So it'll be through the night, visible from the highway.
So just to be clear, what you put in your application, that is not what you're seeking for the dimensions?
No.
Correct. We're amending.
He's asking to amend it now down to 42.
42.
Let me ask this question because I really don't want you coming back. Is 42 feet height sufficient or the area, that area has a 45-foot limit? So if we said not to exceed 45 feet, does that give you the 3? So if we do not to exceed 45 feet, 277, not to exceed 277 square feet of...
Sufficient, signage.
Square feet of signage, frontage.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to be clear when I use these numbers because I, you know, David, I'm over by two feet and you're coming back here. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Members of the board, any questions or any conditions that I'm not focusing on?
No approval.
So I have grant by Jim Corkins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John Frank. Any discussion on the motion?
Just as long as the motion has the exact dimensions.
No, that's the motion.
The amended plans.
Amended plans with the height being not to exceed 45 feet. The one-side face not to exceed 277 square feet. Anything else, Cal, but I don't see anything on that. So that's the motion made by Corkins, second amended by Corkins, seconded by Frank. All those in favor? Greg?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that's granted with those dimensional requirements.
Thank you.
What, David, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Does anyone need a break before we jump into the poll number one? All set?
Sorry.
Okay. Now we're on to agenda item one. Daniel Walsh, 9 Riverview Street, Lot H18-2, variance request to construct in addition to an existing garage to increase from one-car to two-car capacity, waiving dimensional requirements in a waterfront transit-oriented development zone, WTOD, lot size 8,816. Good evening, sir. Identify yourself.
Good evening. Daniel Walsh. I reside at 9 Riverview Street.
Okay. Tell us what you'd like to do, please.
I'd like to, I bought the house in September of 2014. Approximately a year later, in July or August of 2015, I applied for the exact same variance, extending from a one-car to a two-car. It was granted with no opposition. And I, lapse of judgment, I let it expire without pulling a building permit. I didn't realize at the time that if I would have pulled the permit, that I would have been basically grandfathered for the time that I needed, but I did. I filed with the registered deeds at the time when it was granted and I let it expire. So I'm applying for the exact same, no changes, going from a one-car garage to a two-car garage.
One-car to two-car, that's it. What's shown on the plan here, right?
Yes, exactly.
The closest you're going to be is four feet off the property line is the closest point?
Yes, that's correct. And I'm the last house at the dead-end street. I'm the last house on the street.
Okay. Now I was just looking for my prior variance. If you did it in 2015, I kind of remember it. Okay. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Motion be granted.
Motion of grant. Second, Corkins. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, petition's granted.
Thank you.
Pull the building permit, get it filled, will you?
I will.
Santa Cecilia Inc., 440 Bradford Street, Bradford Avenue, G445. This is a variance request to construct a new 112-foot by 56 building to be used as a function hall lodge waiving the requirements in an apartment district, lot size 32,257 plus or minus square feet. Good evening. How are you?
How are you? I have Dan Aguirre, if you could take me.
Let me go get him because I want to ask the question about why you're here because is it as part of the church? Because I think the bishop signed off on the petition, didn't he?
Correct.
Why is, isn't that the church?
Yeah. Not a church.
No, the bishop signed off. No, I'm just asking why it's, it's a permitted use if it's part of the church.
Are you taking opposition here or no?
No, I don't know. No?
No, he's not here. He's not on the...
Opposition will be called up when...
Oh, this isn't, they haven't even done their presentation, but I'll let you speak. No, okay, Dan, tell us what you, tell us what you want to do. But my initial question was...
Go ahead.
In this district...
A2 district.
Yeah. In this district, A2, and I'm looking at it and I just was asking the question because I thought that was a permitted use if it was a church or religious purpose.
But that's not what it is.
It is not what it is.
Oh, it's not?
There's no religious affiliation, just the name. This is a lodge. It's a band club lodge, almost like Our Lady of Angels.
But wait a minute.
Let me get through it.
Yeah, okay. I'll let you make the pitch, but I was just, because I thought the bishop signed off on it. Does the bishop own the land?
Oh, yeah, the bishop owns the land. Yeah, he signed the application.
Okay, that was, I guess, where I was getting confused. Can I sign it?
They have a purchase and sales agreement to buy it.
Okay, I thought it was all associated with the church. Go ahead.
Sorry. They pass out a couple of these.
Opposition, okay.
So we have a couple of things to look at. Again, for the record, Dan Aguirre, Site Tech Engineering, here to sitting on behalf of Santa Cecilia Inc., who are the proprietors of the Saint Cecilia Band Club, is what they're known for now. Currently, they are housed at the property at 293 Almond Street and have been in existence since 2005, if my memory serves correctly. Excuse me, this is Nelson Cabral, who knows intimately the operations and the proposal that's here.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
No, I sold the property to Santa Cecilia in 2003. It's there now. That doesn't give me a conflict. I don't have anything to do with them.
Do you have anything to do, no. Have they paid you?
Yes, they did.
Sure?
Yes, they did.
No, just so long as you don't have any financial interest in it.
No, no, no. I have no financial interest whatsoever.
No, so I don't have a problem with you saying, Greg.
So the applicant is the Saint Cecilia Inc., which is the band club. The current property owner still is the Roman Catholic Bishop of Fall River, who has recently reacquired the property. This piece was conveyed a number of years ago to the Azariaan Cultural Society for the purposes of building the museum, correct, with Fernando Garcia's organization, which after a number of years of trying fundraising efforts, they were never able to bring it to fruition. And once Mr. Garcia's passing occurred, there was no one left in that capacity to continue on with that project. So the property has sat for a number of years. There was a revert clause in the deed to the Azariaan Cultural Society that the property would revert back to the Roman Catholic bishop. So that's how the bishops reacquired the property. So for anyone's length of life that's sitting in this room, you will all remember this as the church that previously had sat on the property. And I've given you an aerial photograph that illustrates the location of the existing church structure and its parking facilities at the corner of Bradford and Eagle Street. The Cultural Society, the museum group, did actually raise the structure. So you see in a number of photos the size of the structure that was there, very large church, had a street-level entrance along Bradford Avenue and a basement walk-in level along the Eagle Street rear parking area. So again, that's how the property had sat for the longest time with the church. So now Saint Cecilia, being down the street, has outgrown the facility that they're in now. And I'll let Nelson explain to you a little bit of their history and what their group does, but at least let me get through the petition first and then he can give you some history on the group. But at least let me get through the petition first, and then he can give you some history on the group itself and what it does do. He can speak much, much better to that than, than I can. So the proposal before you is to construct a new one-hundred-and-twelve-foot-long, fifty-six-foot-wide structure, sixty-two-hundred-and-seventy-two square foot, footwork. Building tucked out into the corner of Bradford Avenue and Eagle Street with a minimum setback distance of five feet to Eagle and five feet to Bradford. The location of this structure was an attempt to mimic the scale and mass of what everyone has lived with over the last hundred-and-fifty years with the structure that was currently there. So we wanted to occupy that corner. This property, as I had stated before, the existing structure had a basement facility that was at walkout grade along the back parking lot area along the side of Eagle Street. We will be mimicking that exact configuration, where we will have a parking facility coming in off of Eagle Street that will allow for grade-level access to the lower level of this building, so it would be a basement level. And then at the Bradford Avenue entrance, the main floor of this building would be at street level of Bradford. And you could enter that first floor of the building along the Bradford Street entrance. You see two little triangles on the plan that we submitted. One would be the entrance at the street-level grade, and then again to the rear of the property. The topographic relief on this site is about eighteen feet from Bradford Avenue to the rear of the property on the north side of Eagle Street. So we've got a pretty good topographic situation to deal with. That's why there is currently a number of retaining walls that wrap around this site. Most notably, the retaining wall is along the north, northerly boundary before you drop down into the playground that was the existing school behind. That existing, existing school had received some relief making it into an apartment building a number of years ago. But again, that project had never been completed either. But that is a separate parcel from this, has nothing to do with, with this petition. So again, back to our proposal is to construct this new band club that on the main floor would have a function facility, just an open hall with a small kitchen area. The basement level would house the private lodge that would have a bar for members only, just like you would see at many of the other social clubs throughout the city. A band practice room, a theatrical practice room, and some storage area on that basement level. The first floor would be used solely for different types of theatrical events, plays, concerts, things of that nature, weddings, I mean, a number of things that members of the club could utilize the property for. We have been able to prepare a plan that would allow us to create sixty-three new parking spaces on the site. Again, with access off of Bradford Avenue as well as Eagle Street. So the parking lot would be contiguous from one street to the other, allowing access in and out of both entrances. For that district, A two, we meet the size requirements for the lot. With regards to the structure, we would be seeking relief for the setbacks to the street again. But again, something very similar to the structure that was previously there. With regards to those sixty-three parking spaces, if you look at the parking density requirements in the city zoning bylaw, for a club or lodge, something similar to this use, they require one space for every five seats in the facility. So doing that math would give the occupancy with sixty-three spaces, let alone utilizing any on-street parking, of three-hundred-and-fifteen seats. I don't think, and Nelson can probably correct me, that they would ever have the need to be in excess of three-fifteen or greatly in excess of a function with three-hundred-and-fifteen people.
You'd have to park across the street anyhow.
We could, again.
And both sides of the park, and get the inside street.
And we'll direct to that, that on Bradford Avenue itself, as I stated, without using any on-street parking, we can, by bylaw, can house enough parking for three-hundred-and-fifteen seats.
You can, but you can't do it in an A two district. But go ahead.
Well, I'm just saying for this type of use, I want, for the proposed use, I want to provide to you the appropriate number of parking spaces. So again, this is in an A two district. And without, we don't even want to discuss using off-street parking, because we really don't, I mean, on-street parking, because we really don't need.
You don't need.
But there is ample parking that everybody uses around the park, the ring road that's within the park, as Attorney Brillian had stated. Now, in this A two district, there are a number of different uses that are allowed. Very high intense multifamily uses. Actually, I believe a hotel or a motel is actually an allowed use. And I, and I point to that because that allowed use, to me, kind of sets the benchmark for intensity of use on the property. I think you would clearly agree that the proposed facility that, that we're proposing for the property would be a, a less of a detriment and less of an intense use than a hotel, which would be an allowed use in this district. So although we do need relief from this board in the form of a variance, this is not a special permit of any kind, I think this will allow us to renovate this property. And as you see in the photos of what people have had to live with for a number of years since the church has been unoccupied and, and used, this will allow for a very substantial renovation of this Keystone property directly adjacent to Kennedy Park. The band club has made a very large attempt and offer to the Roman Catholic Church to enter into this endeavor. It's a lot of work, and their members have had to make some very large commitments in order to make this construction project possible.
I think it'll have any retail space there?
No, no retail space whatsoever.
It's not like we get around a special.
I, I know, if we had, if we had less than five thousand square feet of retail space. However, we don't want to muddy the waters. I mean, this is what they do. They have an impeccable record where they're located. We've got police records back to oh-three, I believe it was, that I was reading through.
Oh-five, when we actually took over.
Okay, and then, when you, if you read through that, and I'll, and I'll submit that list, ninety percent of them are false alarms. There are very, very few incidences. I, I would, I would state that any, probably almost any other, even single-family home might have as many incidences in the city as they've had at this club over the years. So I'm glad to let Nelson, although he did write it all out for me to explain to you, I'd like to let him explain to you what the club does for the youth in the area.
No, if he's the representative, I'd rather hear it from Captain New.
Yep, so Nelson, if you want to just.
Sure.
Use that as your guidance now.
Sure. As a former, thank you very much for the allow me to speak on behalf of the city of Band Club. The, the name itself is registered as such for registration reasons throughout the state. However, we are essentially a philharmonic band first, always have been, that was always the intent of the, of us existing. The primary objective here is to develop and function, obviously, as a community band, which is what we've been doing in the city for, for many, many years. The, the, the approach that we took when we became a band and fully functioning was to allow music first, having community outreach, be involved in all of the Catholic religious events, which we are very heavily involved with. And also provide some outreach specifically within our community when we moved in two thousand and five to twenty-three on the street. Within that community, we were able to provide musical lessons and provided arts of performing arts to allow students to come in and take on practical music. We have musicians who have done that, some have become very, very good and gone on to college, others have gone into other careers, and we gave them some direction and guidance. That is what our primary function is. The, the words lodge and the words of club can be misconstrued. We are not like a Nux Club or a Knights of Columbus, though they have great history. Our intent is to provide an, a ability to have a location for members only. The member process is quite complicated for us. We, we take votes. There are member cards. Anyone that is deemed not, not appropriate or inapplicable to our organization, we, we dismiss them very effectively and very quickly. It's a family-oriented environment, it's a driven environment for that reason. One of the things that we have done through the years, just a couple of bullet notes, because there are many, provide private musical studies available for all, free of charge. Expand our plays and theatrical initiatives, strong partnerships with the schools and their music programs, obviously, the Duffield High School program being the main one in the city. Participate in, obviously, various local events, religious in public, as I mentioned. Some of the examples, we have Christmas Day Parade, Memorial Day Parade in the city. A lot of involvement there, we want to continue to do that. Our main objective is to try to have more space for what we want to do more, more of the same. Our, our current footprint is just too shrunken down for what we need to do. It was a great starting point. And we look to contain that same area in a, in a bigger capacity. We, we represent the city of Full River and travel abroad. This includes foreign country city ambassadors in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and eight, accompanying city officials in the Canada and the Azorion areas. In New York and New Jersey, two thousand and sixteen, we had a similar planned trip, which is coming up in September. And we're going to Brampton, Ontario. Once again, everywhere we go, we represent the city, I think, very, very well. Certainly, we don't want to create any issues with neighbors. We want to be able to have great relationships like we have had currently now. We are in a much smaller area where a lot more multifamily homes reside near us. We are budding much more than what the proposal would be this evening. We have letters from owners of certain, of the neighbors explaining what we've done, the positive that has happened in there, if anyone wishes to see that. And we told the neighbors to let us know your, your real opinion. They felt ever since we took over, that things got much better in that area. We provide, you know, meals for less fortunate, this means that every year we have a Holy Ghost festivities, which is designed primarily as a, an ability to provide recruiting and helping with shelters and providing that, that service as well. That's kind of what the Holy Ghost thing is, we are religious based in that design. Essentially, again, we're looking to just clarify what we are, what we do. We are a band first, we will always be a band first. Yes, there is a bar function that we use that has beverages for musicians or students, whatever the case may be, those are, is obviously allocated accordingly. You know, obviously with ages and all that stuff. We do provide, you know, some, some functions if need be. People come in and they want to utilize that function, we will do that. No different than a Oliver Flack Band, no different than Missy Anthony's Band, no different than the Mush Durris Band, which is on Hope Street. There are four of these, we're the four of one, and that we're looking to continue that same tradition, just in a hopefully bigger footprint that can be more appealing for everyone, and to a bigger outreach. Thank you.
Thank you. You can, you mentioned students. I'm gonna add, can, can somebody go, do they have to be a member of the club for the purposes of learning an instrument?
No.
Do you give lessons?
Yes, I'm actually the clarinet.
Component of the, of the entire operation. I've, I've scoured the zoning bylaws.
No, no, I'm just, I'm trying to think of where we're going.
And Nelson and I have both spoken about that. And, and the edu- if it was solely an educational use, then yes, this would be an allowed use in the area. However, we felt, and after speaking with Nelson, we didn't want to be deceptive in everything that occurs.
No, no.
So even if only one portion of our use requires relief, we felt it appropriate to come seek that relief. Especially when we're dealing with the Roman Catholic Church. And when they sign a purchase and sales agreement based upon a proposed use, they want to make sure that you're being forthright. And, and it's clear to see what the current operation is and how that would, would translate.
The rea- the reason why I'm focusing in on these little component pieces that are permitted uses.
Yes.
The club in the A, in A two district is, is a problem district for this board, because
Oh, it's amazing.
The use, the uses that are very limited in what you can do there. So you've gone through it, I'm looking at it, trying to figure out, is there some way that we can, it's a permitted use? The club is not a permitted use.
That's correct.
It just, it just doesn't get there. And I go back to what the intent, what the ordinance says, and I understand the variance is, let's shape topography, let's talk about the hardship, what we need to do. And I'm just, without that components, without listening to those components, I don't know how we get around it. That's why I'm talking about, is there a retail component? Is there a educational component that I can go this and my kids for lessons, learn how to play an instrument? Not necessarily me being a member.
Well, again.
No, the only contingency somehow, again, with regards to musicians, anyone that comes in, I want a lesson. The, the intent is to provide free lessons to those who want it, is it an official organizational business piece? It's not, but that does exist.
No, no, but I mean, you've got an educational component to it, so I want to go learn to play.
The intent, if someone comes in with, a parent comes in with a child, they want to learn music, that child play pays zero cost. And I'm actually the, you would have been a teacher there, so the intent is to provide the, the student lessons. The end of it is, it's a recruiting funnel for us, that allows that stu- that student to then be able to perform or just play in our band.
I understand. I was just trying to look at Mr. Aguirre and try to see if those were some of the components that were there that may be.
What, what, what basically happens is, in order to offer those types of services, it has to be done under an umbrella, which is the club.
I got it. But, but it's not the major, it's not what's happening. I'm not getting, I'm not having the third grade from the parochial schools in the area going there to learn how to play an instrument. So if you want to learn to play the trumpet, if you want to learn to play the clarinet, then you go to Saint Cecilia's, and they're going to teach you how to play. Okay, that, that was, that was my only, I was just looking for things for you. So, thank you for your input, I appreciate that.
And with, and with regards to what the proposal is, is that, again, this property has sat for a number of years. So now we, we have an organization that, that stepped up to the plate with the funds to come in and do something substantial for the neighborhood with this property. And the, and the intent of zoning is to create a healthy environment for, for the city. So the mechanism to get there requires relief in this district, and, and that's the purpose that we're here for. So we have a parcel with the topography, the need for retaining walls and construction. And, and what really allows us to fit is that we can fit on what was basically there before. And that's why we've, that's why we're asking for specific setback relief. We could meet the setback requirements, but then that would put the building in the middle of the lot with this L shape, it would bring us closer to the butters.
I, I got it, but I mean, you've got it, but you've got some topographical issues, why you couldn't put it there, because of the,
Correct.
Because of the grade. I understand that. But that's all, I mean, I'm just looking because I, I don't know if without, without that, how I get there. But let's see.
If I can, just, he, Nelson's, I know who Nelson is, but that's not who I dealt with when I, when I actually transferred that property. But I can just say this, knowing this, these people, I believe, at the time when they came to Almond Street. I'm sorry, sir. When, when, when they came to Almond Street, I believe you guys were downtown. Were you downtown in the small upstairs?
Yeah, we had a place.
They, I mean, and these, these people put in a, even at the time of buying the place that I owned, a big financial commitment to do that. And where that's located is right in the middle, I mean, they're right smack in the middle of a multifamily district. I mean, it's a one-way street, it's probably got, what do you got, twelve parking spaces, if you're lucky back there?
Twelve, if I'm lucky.
Exactly, exactly. And I, I know, because I know some of the area people, even since I sold it, they're, they're happy with what these people have done. I think I've only probably been there once. But, I mean, I just know that people, and I don't know a lot of them personally, probably none of them anymore. But they, they, they really work hard to do a good job. And in terms of that neighborhood, if, I don't know what that police log says, because I hope it's not from when I owned it. But, um, but if you can survive in that neighborhood relative to your neighbors, I noticed some objections, they can, they can voice their own objections.
So we're gonna get them up there?
Yeah, but, but I can just say that where they are right now, if they can survive over there and, and have no problems, you know, they, they can probably do a very good job at this site.
So let's see if, so did I ask anyone in favor? So all, you all are in favor of it?
Yeah, none of them live there.
No, wait, wait, no, sir, I'm gonna give you the opportunity to speak, I just need to look around, there's nobody behind me, okay. So you all are in favor of this petition, okay. Thank you. Anyone opposed to this petition?
Yeah.
All right, so why don't you, so is it a spokesman, or you wanna?
Yeah.
You?
They'll speak for themselves.
No, okay, so you have a choice. I'd prefer you to come over here, so we can see you and hear what you have to say. Good evening, sir.
Thank you. My name is William Granbowski, I'm in the order of three forty-nine Fountain Street. I have butted northeast corner of the property in question, four forty Bradford Avenue. I have petitioned my local neighbors that have butted four sides. I didn't go out into the streets to get anything from people that don't belong there or live there.
I don't want to interrupt you, but I need to ask the question, you're northeast, so you're at four twenty-five Division Street?
Four thirty-nine.
Oh, no, right here, just.
I have butted northeast corner of the parking lot, because they go back there and walk.
Got you, got you.
Okay. All right.
It's, it's three forty-nine.
Three forty-nine.
Right.
Okay, I got it.
I took liberty of going around to all the neighbors that go down Fountain Street, across Division, up Eagle Street, and across Bradford Avenue. There's not a lot of houses that abut it. But I went both sides of the road because it says a hundred-and-fifty feet from the property. I don't see why only six people that abut it are being sent to notices, and the people that have affected in the whole neighborhood are not given anything. But. But I'll continue with this. As a neighbor, we already have parking issues here. We contend with the Holy Ghost Feast every year that puts us out of our peaceful holes, right? We contend with weekend farmers market. The market traffic is a nightmare. They don't know how to drag. They don't know where they're going. All right? We contend with events, parades, putting us several of us out of our parking spots and dozens of cars with nowhere to go. There isn't enough room for a bunch of cars at any given day or night for events to be going on. A new rent-a-hall and drinking establishment, we don't need it. If it's a thing for children, like they said, fine. You're gonna teach them how to bow horn. Why the hell do they need a license? I have gone to a couple of things there. Yeah, they're peaceful. I have gone to a couple of events there, and you just go in there and have your birthday party for your grand niece, and then you go downstairs and get all your drinks, right? It says members only on the door, which is fine. It's like the Liverpool, St. John's Club, everything else. It's fine. Members only slash and guests. I walk right in there Monday. I walk right in here and talk to a guy. I ask him about rent-a-hall. Oh, you can rent the hall for anything you want, long as it's legal. Good. You can do that in any other building. The point I'm making is, if it's so much for children, and they do so much for children, why do they have to have a liquor license? That's in conflict to me, okay? Let me continue, please.
Please, you got the floor?
Yep, thank you. We do not need another drinking establishment anywhere, never mind the middle of an apartment dwelling. We don't want it here. We do not, we do know that the land needs to be developed and we would welcome a more fitting situation. Mind you, and all here, that by lending an establishment like this would lower our property sale values and purchases evaluations to even lower than what we have now. We have problems with selling our houses now. It's gonna sell. We'll go with a liquor establishment behind me. I don't care if it's for kids. You're gonna rent that hall. They're just set for weddings and everything, right? I'll pick on the Irish people. I want to see seventy-five Irish people, Irishmen, at that club. Because we're going to be drinkers. I do not drink. I never did. I'm Irish. But I'm making a point.
We don't, we don't need to, go ahead, please, continue.
All right. In closing, let me refer to that. When the church structure was taken down and raped for all the values by Al Als, who was a city councilor at the time, and Fernando Garcia, the big auto business insurance guy, God rest his soul, he's passed away. Those were the people that owned it off and on between. I got a full record of everything that they've done, okay? The big owner is now deceased. The remaining brick, cement, rubble, fiberglass, left paints and asbestos was pushed into the hall, left from the basement. There. They're gonna have the E B A come in and clean that out according to chapter one E, I mean twenty-one E.
Sure.
This is irrelevant. We are finding with our neighborhood.
Listen to me. This is the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, we'll issue the appeal each month.
The issues that you're raising are beyond the scope of this board. This board deals with land use only. The issues that you're raising are other departments.
Other departments that fail to control, that's why I'm bringing it here.
Sir, this is the, I don't have, talking to me, talking to this board, we don't have jurisdiction over those issues. We can only deal with the land use issue. The proposal is, they want to develop this building and this lot, and this is what they want to do. In my opening remarks, in my opening remarks, sir, I made this clear statement, I believe it was a clear statement, that other permits, other agencies may need to be involved with the development of it. The limited issue that this board has, or the limited power that this board has, is only to talk about land use. So we have this particular piece of property in this A two residential district, apartment district. They want to do something. They need relief from this board before they can do it. I need to hear, and I'm glad you came out, because this board needs to hear what the neighbors have to say. There's a lot of people in favor of the petition. You're a director, sir, you're a director butler. I'm allowing you lots of latitude to let me hear what it is you want. But you have to limit what you're telling me to things that this board has authority to act on.
Right.
So, please, continue.
All right. In closing, I just want to make two statements.
I'm not telling you to be quiet, but I'm telling you.
No, that's fine. That's fine. I made my point. Two things I want to say that may or may not be on the record that I want to get them out. One, I received an intimidating phone call from a gentleman that sat right here in the army uniform. I will report it to his general commanders, his behavior, wearing an army uniform.
Okay. I understand, sir. This is the zoning board of appeals.
I want it on record, so they've got it recorded. The other thing is that the people that are here are people that totally abut or have anything to do with the property. All these people back here with their hands up are no more than the people that hang around in there. That's all I am. Thank you for your time, people.
Thank you for coming out, sir. Sir, before you, we'll have a seat, but I just want to ask this question. Attached to, this is your, we're gonna make this part of the record, but attached to it is this petition?
Petition is one hundred percent of the people that are there.
No, no, I want to make, okay, so this is also being made part of the record?
Yes.
I just want.
Thank you.
This is a form, is there an original signature? Do you have the original of this form, sir? Do you have a copy for yourself? If you don't have a copy, if you come tomorrow, we'll give you a copy.
Come tomorrow and give it off.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Steve Peraro. I own the house directly abutting the property at four eighty Bradford Avenue.
At four eighty Bradford Avenue, okay. You're on the corner of Bradford and Fountain?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
I just have an issue with this. I mean, I'm all for, you know, helping the kids. I have kids of my own. But it's a residential area. It's not zoned for business. It's not zoned to have a liquor license in there. And I'm just concerned, some, an establishment gets in there, it's gonna create more noise, more traffic. I know there's, they're gonna have some parking, but I'm, you know, with the size of the building that they're putting in, I'm thinking that there's a great capacity there that they're going to take up the parking spots, and they're gonna start parking on the street. And I know the park is there. You know, that offers some parking outside the parking lot. But a lot of times, when they're gonna be over there, it's gonna be on the weekends. If they're gonna have functions, weddings, whatever that they have on weekends, the park is usually pretty congested. Parking is difficult at best. It's tough to find parking spaces around the house. My parents do have, my elderly parents live there. My mom's eighty-two, my dad's eighty-six. My mom's had three strokes. They have a handicap spot in front of the house. If there's anything going on around the park and they leave the house during the day, there are times where they come back and somebody's taking that handicap spot. And if they're gonna put a hall in there and have functions, I just, I have, you know, I just have a concern that they're gonna lose that spot, you know, that when they come home at any given time. And I'm just concerned about the noise level out there, you know, with the function hall and the increased traffic. That's, you know, those are my concerns. I mean, they're saying that they have sixty-three parking spots, so that gives them three hundred and fifteen capacity. And what is the actual capacity of the hall, though? I mean, is it gonna be the three fifteen, or is it gonna be more than that?
Well, they're showing, what is it, a hundred and six, how many parking spots? Sixty-three parking spots is what they're showing on the plan.
Okay.
That's the capacity, that's something that the building inspector would have to issue what that number is. The component pieces that we have, there's a plan that says a minimum of sixty-three parking spaces and a building that they're proposing, a hundred and, was it a hundred and twelve by fifty-six? That's the size.
Seems like a large building for that, for that purpose, and in that area.
Again, zoning board of appeals, that's, we're here to look at that. Those other issues are beyond the scope of what this board has to do. We're concerned about the impact in the neighborhood. So it's good that you're a director butler and you're here.
Did you see the layout of the plan at all? This does have six handicap spots inside the parking lot, just I know that was one of your concerns. There's three up top and three down the bottom, just what they're proposing.
But I know, like, when they have the Holy Ghost Feast there, I mean, the neighborhood is just, it's in shambles. You can't even leave at times. But my thing is that.
But you have the park there. You can't change the park?
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, just if you take that, you know, if you look at the park, you know, there is some parking out there. But on weekends, it's difficult to, you know, I mean, there are a lot of people at the park.
But right now, there's nothing on this site. Is that correct? Am I?
There's nothing on the site. Right.
So the things that you're talking about are things that are happening right now?
Right. But now I'm saying, now, now you put in a building of that size, there's gonna be more people going there. There's gonna be, there's most likely gonna be an overflow into the street, and now there's even gonna be less parking. So that's my concern. And like I said, I have elderly parents that live there. You know, and then you're gonna have the extra noise, the extra traffic. Now, I know you said something about the police reports. I didn't see that. Do you?
I didn't see anything about it. Somebody said.
Somebody mentioned something about a police log for that?
But it was about, I think it had to do what was happening at two ninety-three Almond Street, about the activities and what they've done. And I guess they've submitted them and we've got them, so the police reports are alarm, alarm, false alarm. But it was vehicle towed, vehicle recovery, conditioned junk, noise, no complaint, auto accident. I mean, it's mostly alarm stuff that's there, that alarms were going off and.
So that's an external alarm that's going off? Is that a siren? I mean, if that's going out in the middle of the night.
They submitted it, you're welcome to look at it. I don't know the answer to that.
There's something else that, you know, that, they're saying that there's, you know, no issues there, but there's a large, you know, listing of police reports. Even if it's false alarms, that's alarms going off at all hours of the night, and, you know, I mean, that's.
Well, I don't know about all hours. We could certainly determine that, but I'm not going to go through and tell you what times they were. You're welcome to look at it. But.
So, I mean, that's my concern.
I understand. Okay.
You know, it's gonna have a big effect on the property and the people that live there.
I understand. Conversely, you know, I don't know, if a hotel can go there as a matter of right. It's an interesting thought. If a hotel can be there, what would be the?
How many?
Sir, I'm just saying the usage. The usage could be a hotel. This is a band club, limited use.
But it has a liquor license.
A liquor license has really nothing to do with this board. That's something from the licensing board. I have no jurisdiction over that. So what they're looking for, let me say this, what they're looking for is not permitted in this area. The A two district doesn't allow them to do it. The reason why they're here is they need permission from the board to do it. The issues that you're all raising are valid issues, and it's something for this board to consider. And I need to let everybody who's a butler, who's objecting to it, to talk to us.
Yeah, that's fine.
So you've listened to it. I thank you for coming. Let's see what the other guys gotta say.
Thank you.
Thanks. Come on, you took the time to come to the meeting.
Well, that's my.
He's elderly?
Yeah, you don't, that's good. I'm glad they care as one of our neighbors. Come on, have a seat.
I live at three forty Fountain Street, so I'm not an abutting neighbor. My concerns come when winter time comes.
Tell your name for the record, please.
Oh, my name's Sarah Gilmet.
Thank you.
Three forty Fountain Street. And my concern is mainly when the winter comes, and we can only park on one side of the street. I have no off-street parking at my house. I have very little yard. And we're forced to park our vehicles up the street at the park. Now, what's gonna happen with something like this opens, we're not gonna find spots. And I start work at seven A M. I gotta leave the house early, and I'm worried about the noise keeping me up at night.
But you know what I'm really missing whenever I hear about the parking? We've got sixty-three off-street parking. You've got a piece of property that's not being utilized right now. And the parking situation, if there's some activity on this, it seems it's all gonna be contained within their premises. No real parking impact for all of yous. Maybe I'm missing something, so maybe I need to.
In the wintertime, there's still trouble parking up there. Because there's been times where I've had a tough time where I'm parking like three blocks away from my home. Now, try going shopping, you have three children at home, yourself and your husband, and you're walking three blocks to bring groceries home. That's a little ridiculous.
I can appreciate that. Fall River's an older city. We have these, but we have this park, and we've got this vacant piece of land. And I don't, I'm just trying to make the connection between what you're telling me of the existing problem and the development of this particular piece of property with sixty-three off-street parking spaces. But I can appreciate what exists out there right now, what you're describing to me.
Right. And the liquor license is a little bit of concern too, because I don't know who these people are. And my children are in the neighborhood, and they're gonna be in and out maybe all hours of the night. I don't know what they entail, you know?
Well, I don't think, let me talk about the liquor license for a minute, even though it has.
I know, you guys don't.
No, no, we don't. We don't. But they can't move that liquor license. Miss A Ash is doomed double duty. They can't just move it to this location unless the licensing board allows the.
Correct, and then the butters will be notified for people that direct the property.
So if we say you can do this, they have to still go to the licensing board and the Alcohol and Beverage Control Commission for permission to move the license from wherever they are on Almond Street to this location. It doesn't necessarily happen immediately. This board, the zoning board of appeals, is dealing with strictly, can you do this? They need other permits of boards to grant them permission to act. So that's my issue about this.
Just giving them permission to be able to move forward on the plans that they want to put that there?
If this board grants them permission, that's all that we're doing. They have to go to the other boards to make the other, to make whatever else they want to do happen.
Well, I do have to agree with some of my other neighbors. We do put up with a lot living in that neighborhood. We do have the feasts. We do have the parades, which is not all bad, because it happens a few times a year or whatever. But this is something that's gonna be happening like all the time. This is one of my concerns, but.
You live there. This board, and I, the board members can hit me after the meeting, but I, but we really want to hear what the neighbors that are direct abutters to are concerned about. So I need you.
I'm not against them playing their music. I think that's a great thing. But I'm concerned, like, with the liquor license, the drinking that might occur there, what's gonna happen with the parking and all that stuff, because I have to live there.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mom, come on.
Hi, my name is Helen Carrier, and I live at four eighty Bradford Avenue. My concern is mostly the noise. It's a very hectic neighborhood now with traffic from South Main to Bradford Avenue continuously. There's a lot of noise from the cars, from the motorcycles, from people walking up and down the street. And then, like she said, my neighbor, we have to contend with everything else that goes on in the park. And I know, I'm Portuguese, I know about these clubs, and they are good. But in our neighborhood right now, we really don't need this. It's really a bad street right now. We have a lot of activity going on in the park, just late at night. I'm always up and down. My living room is right there to see what's going on in the park. If someone's in trouble, I need to call the police. This goes on constantly. And I just feel this is just an added thing to that neighborhood that I really don't want to see. I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dan, do you want to respond at all to any of?
You want to let anybody speak in favor first?
Sure. I mean, if you want to speak in favor, because I know you all, so we can start in the back and work our way forward, or is there a spokesman that you've heard? What's the sergeant's name?
Yes, the sergeant, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know whether, okay, yeah, come on down. Tell us who you are, please.
My name's Peter Comarren. I'm the band director.
Okay, where do you live, Peter?
I live, um, probably two sixty-four Hope Street. I just moved to five hundred Walmart Street.
Okay. So tell.
As a band director, and I can appreciate what all the abutting residents are saying, because for forty-three years, I lived across the street from the Forest Sports Club. And if you know where that is on Hope Street, I can look right at the front door. And you want to talk about noise, that was noise. You want to talk about drinking, back in the day when they could drink outside in the park on the sidewalk, I dealt with that. So I know exactly what they're saying, okay? That's not us. When we moved to Almond Street, I'm one of the original ones. You don't remember me regularly. I'm one of the original guys who, we took a band that had zero. We had no money. We barely had a band. I took over a band with thirteen musicians. Typically, our type of band is about fifty. And I'd say to one of the kids, give me a middle C, and he'd say, what's that? So I took over a band with those conditions, with no instruments. And we raised the money to buy the instruments that we needed, and we were on a third floor building. And we were on a third-floor building over the Lucy Tanya Club on, um, South Main Street. We moved over to TA Restaurant, and then we, we worked hard, and, uh, we brought in a lot of the children, we... Back when, uh, and I don't know if anybody here was part of any of these discussions, but when the, uh, public schools were looking at mixing music programs, um, at the time, I was, um, I had a music store, and we came forward, and we, um, supported the music system through our, through our organization. Free lessons, free instruments, and if anybody here plays a musical instrument, you know that a clarinet, a brand-new clarinet can cost you seven hundred dollars, between six and seven. Used, maybe a hundred and fifty bucks if you went to a flea market. And we don't give our kids just beat-up, uh, used instruments. Music lessons, they can run about eighteen to twenty dollars every half-hour lesson. Books, maybe eight to ten dollars every book, and if it's, if it has a CD or DVD, about twenty bucks. We have to raise money for this, okay? Unfortunately, uh, things don't come free when we're trying to do things good for the, for the community, for the neighborhood. Okay, a lot of our kids have gone on to the middle schools, they've become successful through high school playing music. We've developed a lot of those children, some of them are here, they've gone on to college. Brandon's right in the back row, he just graduated from Rhode Island College, and we're very proud of him, not just him. We have Brittany Costa, we have Andy, um, Chow, who, uh, gained his master's degree, and he's now a music teacher in, uh, university out in Boston. And, and the list goes on of all the kids who came through our system, and now. We do have to raise money, we wish, you know, how about the neighbors, would you be willing to give us a few thousand dollars to buy some-
I got, I got, listen, your program, listen, your program is without question laudable.
I, I, and I understand this is out of your scope, I got you.
Again, my guy was telling the opposition, this is the zoning board of appeals.
I understand.
We have a building, we have some land, that you wanna develop it. I need to hear, uh, uh, why you're in support of it, why you think it's a good idea for this particular development in the neighborhood. What you do, what your, what your, your program is, and what you do for the community is unquestionable. It's really, we, this board needs to focus on about the land, the shape, topography, soil condition. Is it good for the neighborhood, what's the hardship?
Can I ask them about the building?
Yeah, ask about the building.
Is, is, are aware of, of, I'm sure, what, style building, type of building, one floor, two floors, basement level? And you mentioned something about the club being on a lower level, or-
Yeah, the intent, yeah, the intent of building, the building, because of being sloped-
Yep.
Was to have a walkout feature where we would have, if there was a noise issue, uh, the noise definition of what noise is, if they're talking about musical instrument noise, that was, that was going to be in the basement area, where there will be a soundproof room with a decibel level, not exceeding eighty-five. Um, and that is the, the norm, where it thinks they subdue it for rehearsal purposes, that is the intent. Our spot that we're in now, currently, it's a, it's a very live function hall that is used twofold. The first fold, it's used for functions, that meaning if someone comes in and wants to have a baptism thing, or they wants to have something of sorts, which is under a controlled environment, and it's also used for the function hall. So, the hardship that we impose, we've had for twelve years, is the fact that we just don't have enough capacity to do both of those things. The, the, the question of the bar issue, it's a vehicle of many vehicles that we use as a financial revenue. Therefore, we know that the troubles and revelations that it can bring forth is the fact that drinking alcohol, what it does, that, that is why a member's only thing is designed to keep control and command of what's going on there, so-
So, the, the lower level, it's, it's gonna be a two-full-story building, um?
We'll be using both, uh, both floors, the bottom level being, uh, where we're gonna use mostly with the music, uh, and a lounge or with the bar area.
And that's gonna be mostly underground, that's gonna be like a basement level, for lack of a better-
They're gonna use the same footprint John, like they used to have.
Right, so, so, that's what I'm saying, it slopes down quite a lot in the back, so it's gonna be a partially submerged basement, and then one level close to Bradford Avenue.
So, from round level, from round level at the street, it'll appear like a single, single level.
From Bradford Avenue, it's gonna look like a single level, but two in the back.
Coming up on Eagle Street, it'll come down, that sloping, that, that downward spiral, we figured that downward slope would, would actually enable us to be able to do things there without avoiding any issues at the upper levels of, of certain, of certain abutters and neighbors, of course, that road goes slow. But certainly, the interior building that down there was for that, to minimize or adjust it, reduce it to, to zero with noise, and having it properly acoustic, therefore, we can do our rehearsals accordingly, without having any issues that are gonna provide noise ordinance issues to the community.
I don't know what's, what's into play, but hours of operation, and so-
Well, I was just gonna say, could you tell, only cause I might already, like, know the, the basics cause of Oliver Yavlight Band Club, Sandy Anthony's Band Club, on a normal week, what time do you guys close? Weekday?
Uh, the, the building overall, between nine and ten. The band rehearses, we don't go past nine, quarter past nine, cause the kids have school the next day. And we know they have to get home. But just on sound, just, uh, in general, if you go out to the Dwelley Street location where the Army National Guard Band plays, I was there when we reconstructed that room. We put a single layer of homasol, if you know that, it's once a cardboard-type plywood, around, and if you're standing outside, and our purpose was, because we're right across the street, there's some three-deckers, and, and, uh, when, when I was serving back then, we want, we came outside with the commander to check the soundproofing. And with one sheet, uh, it, it completely closed off the sound. You can only hear the band once you get in the hall. And, and, and the army band is, you know, a bunch of professional musicians who are really tooting their horn, and they're right near windows where they're blowing. Uh, the proposal is because, because I know the sound would be an issue, coming from a, a neighborhood where sound was an issue, uh, we can put Brazilian soundboard and homasol, uh, to make sure the sound is retained. Cause as the band director, I want deafening sound, this is too much acoustic for me alone in this room. I want deafening sound, I wanna hear every mistake so I can correct it. Okay, so as far as sound-wise, I want it as soundproof as possible.
You were marching, Dean?
Uh, we do march, yes.
Right, you're not gonna be marching outside, doing any of your practices in the yard?
No, no, no.
What, what, what function size capacity is being planned for the upper floor?
Two fifty to three hundred.
Yeah, three hundred would be a, a stretch, but, uh-
Two fifty is more realistic, two, I don't know. Certainly because the functions of today are just much less. Um, very rare, we're gonna have a function that's gonna exceed three hundred. Um, so two fifty to three hundred was, was the number that was driven, but that number can be worked on if we get that, that forthcoming, if the city says you're gonna do two thirty-seven, then it's two thirty-seven. We've been dealing with a hundred and ten for twelve years, so, anything over the a hundred and ten for us would be an upset.
I'd like to address the parking, we'll put, um... I know it's, you know, as it's been stated, uh, and I, and Nelson's been doing a lot of work here, with Mr. Ag, Mr. Aggyar. But parking, right now, we have a very small parking lot, and Mr. Brilliant knows this. Um, in times of parking bans, I know what parking bans are, I live in the city. Uh, our neighbors have used our parking lot, and we've welcomed them, I've have, I've helped push some, some vehicles out of the snow to help them get in there, and we'd be welcome to talk to the neigh- we wanna be good neighbors, we're not against the neighborhood, that's not what we want, we wanna be good neighbors, I know it's out of, you know, some of the scope what we're talking about, but I-
No, 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 let the man speak, please.
I, um, so parking is something that we can talk to the neighbors about, okay? But, uh-
Listen to me, your parking.
Yeah.
Right now, it's a vacant lot, you're proposing sixty-three off-street parking spaces for your use. That's, that's what we've got on the table, that's what we know, you're not... I got it, I think the board has it, we've got sixty-three off-street parking spaces, and we've got the use of this building. The question, the really, the limited question now for, for this board, is there anybody else that has anything that wants to contribute, uh, in favor? Cause I think we listened to the opposition, and I guess maybe Mr. Aggyar reminded me that maybe I didn't ask everyone in favor, we had lots of hands go up. Have, have we adequately heard why you're all in favor of this? Is there anyone else that has anything new, or, okay? So really, for the board, it's, does it fit into the neighborhood, is there, is there, have they met the burden of shape, top-
So, just one thing, just to mention that, four twenty-five, the owner of four twenty-five is in favor, and there is a letter stating as such.
I, I haven't gotten, I haven't gotten to that, there were three letters, I think, that Mr. Aggyar gave me. One was from, uh, Michael Pimento, my name is my, I'm writing to say that I think he's saying, he's trying to do a reading good for the area. Another one is for, from Carlos Gomes, uh, twenty-five Howard Street. And this other one is from Monica Bouchard. Who, who is it? That's, what's four twenty-five, that's opposed, or that's in favor?
These are opposed, yeah.
Let me see?
There's four people listed at four twenty-five.
Right, so is that what you were saying, four twenty-five?
I have the owner of, Antonio Momoza.
You have to be careful of getting property owners' comments, not-
Well, this is, no, well, this says Maria Momoz, four twenty-five Division Street. And Antonio?
My, my thing about hours of operation is still kind of left up in the air. We talked about during the week, possibly nine o'clock now.
Talk about weekends.
Weekend, yeah, weekends of, uh, if you're having, uh, an event, you know, whether it be a-
Sir, wait, let's do Monday, first, you got, Monday through Friday, I heard them say nine o'clock?
Well, for practice, and then they said they're out there by ten, is what you said. So, AM, AM, but what time would you open up, if you were planning on being open on, during the week?
We typically open around eleven AM.
So it'll be eleven to ten?
Correct.
Monday through Friday, Monday through Friday?
Yes, well, Friday, we usually go till about midnight.
So that's what I'm asking, so Monday through Thursday?
Monday through Thursday.
Eleven to ten, Friday?
Till about midnight, yeah.
Friday, Saturday?
Saturday, did we change?
Saturday's same, till midnight.
Alright, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Sunday's typically in the morning, um, the band normally rehearses from nine-thirty till about one, the, the-
On Sunday morning with them?
Nah, if someone goes in to clean around eight, but the band usually gets there between nine and nine-thirty.
Nine to one?
Nine to one's the, the band function, but the hall, uh, uh, the organization's open till about five, six o'clock.
So, nine to six on Sunday?
Yeah. Yeah, about five, six o'clock.
But, any signs on the building?
We, we, we do have a sign right in front of, of the building on our property, and it's, uh, it's illuminated from two spotlights from the ground up.
So it's flat, up against the wall of the building, not a post sign, nothing on the-
It's not internally illuminated, it's externally-
We can limit all signage to being building mounted.
Correct.
Parking, uh, lighting in the parking lot?
This, I mean, a site like this is the purpose Site Plan Review-
Yeah.
Was really instituted.
Yeah.
And so, a site like this is probably gonna be one of their first real site plan reviews, but that kind of lighting, um, question would be something that Site Plan Review would handle to make sure that we provide lighting plans to show that there's no spillage over to abutting properties. Drainage, all, all the things like improved drainage for the area, landscaping, that would all be addressed through the, uh, through Site Plan Review. And, I mean, although, although we didn't say it, I'm sure you're all somewhat familiar, we're in a neighborhood that is one hundred percent comprised of non-conforming uses on non-conforming parcels. Just about every single one.
No, no, we, we got that, if you heard me say that, older city, older neighborhoods, and, and we've got this one large lot that can do lots of other things in there, hotels, funeral parlors, uh-
Yeah, I mean, you, you could actually do, at a minimum-
You could have retail space there?
A twelve-to-a-sixteen unit apartment building, which I think would be even, even more of an inconvenience than, than the proposed activity.
So, I mean, it's just something to consider, but have they met the burden of shape, topography, soil condition, hardship, public good? And that's really the standard we have to go by, I think what they're doing is wonderful, but, uh, let's get back to the basics of what zoning is. Okay, with that, uh, any other questions, maybe for the board? Motion to grant with conditions, motion to deny, what do you wanna do? Cal, do you think they met the hardship, all the bur- all the-
I will make a motion to grant with the conditions set forth with hours of operation. Motion to grant with conditions as to hours of operation, um, all signs to be, uh, on the building, uh, minimum of sixty-three parking spaces, and subject to-
Site plan review.
Site plan review.
Do you wanna specify the Monday through Thursday, eleven AM to ten PM? Friday, eleven AM to midnight?
Yeah, but-
Saturdays, yeah, Friday, did you say that?
Well, I didn't say the specifics, but Monday through Thursday, as you said, eleven AM to ten PM.
Friday and Saturday, eleven to twelve, to noon, to, to midnight, and then Sunday, nine to six? So that's your motion? Okay, to grant.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, John Frank, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Frank?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, 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 that's a unanimous vote, all in favor, that petition's granted with those conditions. Thank you.
We're gonna take a five-minute rea- five-minute break before we finish up.
Oh, yeah, number three, oh my god, I was on number six, uh-
That's horrible.
Alright, number three, uh, Ten Third Street LLC, care of Adolino Jacob, Ten Third Street, N-six thirty-four, variance request to construct a three-story building for use as an art gallery, photography studio on the first floor, with the second and third floors together being a single residential unit, waiving all applicable requirements in the local business district BL, lot size two thousand one hundred ninety-five, plus or minus square feet. Good evening, identify yourself with the record.
Yes, good evening, my name is Jeff Holman from SciTech Engineering, I'm here representing Ten Third Street LLC. Uh, with me here tonight is Dean Diago, a partner in the LLC, and Eddie Jacob, also a partner in the LLC. Uh, before I start my presentation, I would like to note that, um, there has been one change, um, that's gonna be made to this application moving forward, is, uh, after we initially filed it, um, the partners got together and decided that a, um, they'd be better off doing a two-story building here as opposed to the third. So the, the proposed apartment, um, on the second and third floor is gonna be cut back to just a second-floor apartment above the, uh, uh, studio.
Okay.
Okay, so just quickly, I, I handed out a packet for everybody to review to help kinda go through the presentation here. Um, the first thing I started with was the subdivision plan, which was done back in, uh, nineteen eighty-three. Um, this is the plan that created, uh, the lot. Um, as you can see, there were two buildings, um, located originally on one property. Um, you know, without knowing the full history back then, it, it appears as though the, they had used a Citco statute to, uh, subdivide the two buildings, put them on their own properties. Um, because when you look at the setbacks, uh, maybe you had the buildings are right on the property line. So, at that point, back in nineteen eighty-three, the, the, uh, the lot was created. In nineteen ninety-five, after, after it was subdivided, it was still owned by, uh, Michael and Cornelia McGliffen at that point. In nineteen ninety-five, the parcel that we're here for tonight was sold off separately. It changed hands. Uh, over the subsequent years, it changed hands a few times until in July of two thousand eight, uh, the property was purchased by the petitioners. At that point, the plan was, well, around that time is when the city, um, I believe, came up with the plan to, uh, issue five additional liquor licenses to promote, um, what was the Arts and Entertainment overlay district at that point. Um, so they were looking to, to buy the, buy the, the building and convert it into a, um, a restaurant. Uh, it was gonna be vintage wine and tapas at that point. They went so far as to obtaining one of those liquor licenses that were available, um, and they also pulled a building permit at that time to remodel, um, the, the, the building that was on site. Um, the building itself, if you look at the second page, it shows the, you know, what was there previously. Um, I don't, I'm sure you're all kinda familiar with the site, given the proximity here at the City Hall. Uh, there was a coffee shop at that time on the first floor with a, an apartment up on the second floor. Um, so basically, they had pulled a building permit to remodel, uh, to turn it into the, the wine and tapas restaurant. Um, during the, the cost of the remodeling, um, there were some issues that arose with the actual structure itself. Um, to the point where the city building department came in, um, after seeing what was, um, you know, behind the walls and stuff like that. And they kinda deemed that the, the structure wasn't suitable, um, for the intended use. Um, and they basically, I, I don't believe it was them, but they, um, recommended that the building be knocked down. So in two thousand ten, um, the building was demolished, the demolition was, uh, permit was pulled in February, and the building was demolished. At that point, um, you know, given, given the, the, you know, partnership, uh, there were four partners at that point, um, they couldn't decide on, on how to proceed with the, um, with the property. They were all fairly young guys, they were settling down, getting married, having kids. This, this restaurant wasn't gonna be a primary source of income for any of them, it was kind of a secondary thing that they were gonna get into. Uh, so basically, in, in, getting around that time, and the recession was, was pretty bad, uh, the financing wasn't, they had to move forward with the project, so they just kinda let it sit, they cleaned up the site, and they just paved, um, and converted it into, um, and you go to further on in the, the presentation, I also included a copy of the deed, so you can see that, back in two thousand eight, they, the purchase price on the property was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, for the site, but as you can see from the aerial photograph, and also there's a street view, um, in there as well, uh, basically, they cleaned up the site, paved it, um, created five parking spaces on private property that they had been leasing, um, since that time. Um, the money that they generate on the lease of the parking spaces, which is two hundred and fifty dollars a month, I believe, certainly doesn't cover the cost of the mortgage that they have- certainly doesn't cover the cost of the mortgage that they have on the property, the remaining mortgage, which I believe is around eighty thousand dollars on this site. So, you know, this property's been sitting in this condition for, for quite some time, since roughly two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. The pro, proposal that's before you tonight, um, again, is the application for, um, to construct an art studio on the first floor. Basically, you know, put a building in, um, that's going to be in, in the same general location, the same general size as what was there before, and I'll get into that a little bit further. But basically, the, the, the intent, um, of the structure that we're proposing on this site is going to be an art, art gallery and photo studio. Um, the gallery studio is to be used by Dean Diago, who was one of the partners in the, in the partnership that owns the property. Dean's a local artist, um, who's done, you know, was born and raised in the city, he's done a lot of work in the city. Um, if you're not familiar with Dean, I guarantee you that you're familiar with his work. Um, all you have to do is to go down in the lobby here at City Hall, look above the elevators, and you'll see Dean's work. Uh, the paintings, or the photographs, I should say, that, that are on canvases that are scattered throughout the lobby were all done by Dean and donated to the city, uh, they were done free of charge. Um, and Dean, I should note, is currently working on a project, um, with Don Lewis, who's the Director of Innovation Technology for the City of Fall River, uh, on a project, um, that's going to, that they're going to use moving forward to update the city's website. Um, it hasn't been unveiled yet, but that's in the process and, you know, it looks like that's going to move forward, uh, sometime in September. On that project, Dean is donating all his time, um, on that project as well. Um, the second floor apartment on the structure that we're proposing is to be used by Dean as well. Uh, the idea being it's going to be his apartment upstairs with the art gallery and photo studio downstairs. Um, so as you can see on the, the plan, uh, that we had submitted, um, what we're proposing is to construct a building which has a footprint of one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight square feet, it is now going to be two-story and not the three as shown. Uh, the building that was previously on the site was one thousand three hundred and thirty-six square feet, so it's a little bit smaller than what we had previously on, on the property.
How many parking spaces?
Are we proposing?
Yes.
Uh, if you don't, I'll just get to that in one second, uh, as I wrap up here. So basically, um, if you look at the subdivision plan and any plan of record, unfortunately, uh, by the time I got involved with the, with the project, the building was already torn down. So exact location, uh, we're not certain of, but again, there is a plan on record, uh, the original subdivision plan back in eighty-three that shows the building location. The building itself was basically right on or within inches of the southern property boundary. Um, what we're looking to construct here would be set back off of that property at a minimum of two point four feet, um, which doesn't sound like much, but when you consider what was there previously, it's, it's greater, certainly greater than what was there, and that is, the two point four is in an area where, uh, the, the building directly abutting the property to the south is set back off of the property line as opposed to, as you get out towards Third Street, where it's right on the property line. Um, the parking arrangement that we have on this site is, if you go back and you can see on the, the street view that was provided to you, um, with the parking area that's there now and the parking spots off to the side, there was one, um, parking spot that was eliminated by the city in order to put this driveway in. That parking spot with this proposal would be reinstated and be able to use, be able to be used on Third Street. Um, we are also proposing two additional parking spots at the rear of the property, which would be used, um, by Dean, the resident on the, on the second floor, so those would be designated for the apartment. Um, the, the studio itself, um, at this point, Dean does not have a, a studio to speak of. He does all of his work either going in public places or meeting his clients either at their house or, or wherever it may be. So he really, um, isn't utilizing a studio at this time. Um, this studio would be, I, I think, would be an asset to the city, it's dead smack in the middle of the Arts Overley District, and I think it's, um, you know, it'd certainly be a welcome addition, um, to the city. Now, Dean has brought, um, a picture of his work. Dean, do you want to get up and just, um, basically show the board the type of work in case they're not familiar with what he does? Just to wrap up the presentation?
We'll let him get, we'll let him get a few, couple of seconds, but it really has nothing to do with the zone.
No, I just, just to give the board...
Gallery-wise, with, what we're trying to, uh, to create is just be able to showcase the work and, you know, just have a place where people can have, have an opportunity to come visit and buy our local landscapes.
Thank you.
So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
What type of building do you, do you anticipate?
It's going to pretty much mirror what you see there, you know, we don't...
It's going to be a little bit more like, you can, that type of style or more like, I know...
No, it's going to be the style, it's going to be an A-frame, you know, we'll obviously have to meet setback requirements, um, but...
Well, it won't...
You're not meeting any setback.
No, we're asking for relief on dimensional rights, but it's going to have to meet building code, obviously, yes.
No, well, the reason I ask is because it, it, there's a lot of buildings in downtown especially that are kind of like, in my, my opinion, underutilized, and this would be something that I would hope that more people downtown would do, to have a commercial use with some apartments or loft apartments, because we got to do something with the downtown area when it comes to that, because it just, it's just not good in my opinion. So this is why, when I was looking at this, I, I had a little interest in it, because maybe it'll motivate other people to even attempt to do this. I wish they would, and, and, and do something with those, you know, kind of dilapidated buildings downtown, in my opinion. Um, I, in Recreation Drive over here, they just bought this building, so they're not open at night, so, I don't know, maybe it'll get somebody to buy that old police station.
Hopefully.
But, uh, all right.
So, uh, two stories, not three?
Correct.
Two parking places in the back.
Which hours of operation, Dean, potentially, for, for the, for the studio?
Nine to about eight Monday to, to Friday, and Saturday, nine to maybe five. And a lot of it too is going to be on appointment basis as well, because I, I work alone, I, you know, really depending on, you know, my editing, just going out to get, uh, the images, so really depending, but frame-wise, you know, hopefully I get to the point where I can actually hire someone and be there full-time, that's the...
The plan?
The goal. I'll come with.
I don't think hours really in that downtown area matter.
Hopefully someone would be down there, right?
If we can bring some people downtown, the leader, I'd be great.
I agree with you, a hundred percent.
Signage?
Signage would probably be as simple as what you see there with a canvas type awning.
But any sign would be connected to the building, not illuminated?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, entrance access is on the backside for the...
No, on Third Street, oh, for, for the apartment, yes, correct, at the rear.
Okay.
There will be an interior access as well, but the, yeah, the main entrance to the apartment will be on the side.
In the rear?
I mean, uh, sorry, to the rear.
An investment for you guys to build it up?
It's been an investment for years.
I know.
Unfortunately, not a very good...
We're going to have to have utilities, so... Yeah, there's nothing to say except for, yeah. Okay, is anyone here in favor of this petition? Justice for it? No? No comment?
Mr. Salino?
John or Peter?
I have none.
Okay, all right, uh, members of the board, get a motion to grant, motion not denied?
Move to grant.
Second.
Move to grant Clark is second. Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Really?
Thank you, sir.
No, opposed?
Thank you.
What's wrong with me? I don't think it meets the standard, okay, but that's it, the petition's granted.
Thank you.
Good luck. We'll take agenda item number...
Thank you, Members of the Board.
Five, Tetraert Real Estate LLC, care of Aaron H. Tetraert, six seventy-nine Hanover Street, N twenty twenty, special permit request for relief pursuant to section eighty, eighty-six four twenty-four to allow, uh, the expansion of an existing non-conforming two-family use by converting into three-family dwelling while providing new off-street parking in a single-family district S, lot size nine thousand four seventy-four plus or minus square feet. Hold. Thank you. Go make this part of the record.
Yes, please. Good evening, uh, for purposes of the record, Attorney Peter Salino with offices at five fifty Locust Street, Fall River for the petitioner. Uh, the letter referred to by the chairman was written by Attorney Frank as he was sitting in the audience here. The subject parcel is his family homestead, it was sold to my client in the summer of two thousand sixteen. Uh, Mr. Frank has told me a little bit about the history of the property, but in essence, and I know we've all been here a very long time, uh, seeking a special permit to put an apartment on the third floor. Um, the proposal includes three more parking spaces, and Mr. Frank's letter, which I know hasn't been read into the record, he tells me that his family...
Well, let me read it, go ahead. David, Mr. Chairman?
I, I support Tetraert Real Estate's position...
He doesn't have an interest in the property anymore.
He does not.
He's just, uh, uh, he wasn't here, he wanted to, okay, expand the existing two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling.
My family owned this property from nineteen sixty-five to two thousand sixteen, uh, we converted it, as I was saying, we converted it to a two-family dwelling to accommodate our extended family. At one time, it housed nineteen family members and allowed for eight cars to be parked off-street. This, this alteration will not be detrimental to the neighborhood, but will be in keeping with, looks like the many multifamily houses on Hanover Street, very truly yours, Arthur D. Frank Jr. So it's now part of the record, thank you.
Perfect. So I just wanted to point out the number of people that occupy and the number of parking, uh, a number of cars that were parked there.
So everything's happening within the confines of this building?
That's correct.
We're not doing anything outside?
Nothing.
We're using the third floor, turning it into a third apartment?
That's correct.
And we're adding three or, three more off-street parkings?
That's correct.
The garage is stay in the back?
It is there.
And that's your petition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Members of the board, any questions? Make sure there's any questions, Greg.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion to grant by Attorney Brilliant, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Carolyn Morris said to oppose to it, okay, so the vote's four to one, Carolyn's opposed, petition's granted.
Dave's going to resign us.
Wait a minute, you're still on the record, you're still on...
I apologize, I apologize.
Okay, uh, can I, can I, we don't have any minutes, do we? All right, so I won't waive the minutes, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River is hereby closed, thank you.